Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order for the Hingham Board of Selectment for March 17, 2016. Happy St. Patrick's Day. I'd like to welcome our new Assistant Town Administrator, Tom Mayo. He's joining us here tonight. He started this week, so welcome, Tom, and look forward to working with you for many years to come. Okay, we have a lot on the agenda tonight, so we're gonna try to move right through it. Many of you, I'm sure, are here for the eight o'clock discussion of the Avalon-Hingham Shipyard Project. But before we get to that, we're gonna go through a number of other items. So, first matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for February 4, 2016. I'll entertain a motion.
I just had one item. It looks to me as if halfway down the first page, there's an edit in red, and I think the word "not" should be between "did" and "participate."
That makes sense.
Paul, does that make sense to you as well?
Oh, yeah. I didn't see it, but I know exactly what you're talking about. It's fine.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 4, 2016, as amended.
Second.
A favor?
Aye.
Questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Hearing none? We'll move right to it. 7:05, public hearing on the transfer of the retail package store, all alcoholic license from 121 Douglas Associates, Inc., DBA Ralph's Wine and Spirits. Welcome. Join us at the table.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Timson. I represent the licensee, the transferee, purported transferee, RMP LLC. They're going to be doing business as Douglas Wine and Spirits Hingham, which is a franchise operation. They -- I handed you out a packet of information. This is a -- an organization where they have professional management, they have a one-and-done rule for their employees, every employee is tip-certified, so they're very conscious, and the only time they want to be here in front of the board is here tonight, not for any other purpose. They do a lot of outreach to the community in the sense of they have wine tastings and educational seminars regarding wine and other products that they sell, so that's an interesting aspect of their business. They're going to have local job creation, eight to nine part-time jobs and two full-time. They run a employment day where they bring in local people. The manager, Michael Duklos, is here. He's the purported liquor license manager. He has three years of experience running a similar type of operation. It's a liquor store in Millbury. He's married for 29 years, and so he's a suitable person to be appointed as manager. I don't know if there's anything else that you'd want to hear here tonight, but I just figured I would get that out there and see if there are any questions.
And for the board, administration has passed through all the criteria on this and reviews with all the corporate departments. Everything is in order.
All right. Questions from my colleagues?
None.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the retail package store, all alcoholic license from 121 Douglas Associates, Inc., doing business as Ralph's Wines and Spirits to RMP LLC, doing business as Douglas Wine and Spirits, subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
At this time, we'll invite the Aquarian Water Company to come up and join us with respect to a water main installation on South Pleasant Street. Gentlemen, we can have the floor as a word. Do you have any green on?
Hi, John.
How are you?
Good thanks.
Hey, John, how are you? Hi, how are you?
Evening, Mr. Sylvester.
Good evening.
Good to see you. Gentlemen, what's the proposal before us?
Okay, we are here -- first of all, thank you very -- sorry. Thank you very much for having us this evening. With me tonight is Jeff Farrell, who's our Director of Operations for Massachusetts, and Adam Cran, who's from our engineering consultant. We're here tonight to request a grant of location for about 2,800 feet of new water main on South Pleasant Street. This water main will carry untreated water from one of our well fields to our treatment plant. So I wanted to put that in a little context, just to take a minute or two. This map behind us here shows the elements of our raw water system. We have -- we get water from 11 wells and a reservoir, and on this map, we've got north -- let me get it situated here. Do you mind if I stand up?
Sure.
Oh, excuse me. This is South -- so, we've got 11 wells and a reservoir. The reservoir is not on the map, shown down here. Two wells at Scotland Street, one in Prospect Street, and then we've got three wells -- three wells at our -- three wells at our Fulling Mill facility, and five wells at our Free Street well field. In the middle of all that is our treatment plant. At each of the wells, there is a well pump, and at the reservoir, there's a pump station with three pumps in it. All those pumps pump water through the piping that's shown here in various colors by size to the treatment plant. And this project involves installing a water main on South Pleasant Street, right here, to improve or increase the capacity and the reliability of water from our Free Street well field to the treatment plant. So, in all of this infrastructure, the wells, the pumps, the piping, that's all called our raw water infrastructure because it carries untreated water to the treatment plant where it's treated. So in 2014, we identified the need to improve the -- our ability to move water, more water, from our wells in the reservoir to the treatment plant, and we developed a plan of projects to improve that capacity. We implemented most of those projects in 2015. There was about $700,000 worth of work done, and the project we're presenting tonight is the next project in that plan. With this project, we'll be installing that water main on South Pleasant Street. There is an existing water main there. It was installed around 1900. It is a 14-inch diameter main. When we hydraulically tested it, it has the carrying capacity of an 8-inch main, and that's because of what's called tuberculation. Mineral deposits over time collect on the inside of the pipe. What that means is when we're pumping water, the pressure is high at our Free Street well field, which creates a risk of breaking main, and we did have a water main break out there at one point. And also, we're pumping against high pressure, and thus, it's an energy problem as well. So this existing main will be used in parallel with the -- excuse me, the new main will be used in parallel with the existing main. Both mains will be in service. As I said, it's about 2,800 feet of water main from the intersection of South Pleasant Street and Main Street to our Fulling Mill well field and building. We do have the existing raw water main in the road, as well as a 24-inch distribution treated water main in the roadway already, and then we're adding this new water main, which is a 12-inch diameter water main. And that's it. If you have any questions, that'd be great.
Questions from my colleagues.
Thank you. Just so I'm clear, in terms of the new piping, is this running right along South Pleasant?
It'll be in the roadway, in the paved roadway.
Okay. And how long of a period of time will the work take?
Four to six weeks.
And just during that time, will South Pleasant, will it be down to sort of one lane, or...?
During construction, it will be down to one lane.
And either John or Harry, do we typically notify the residents who live along a street when a project like this is starting so that they are aware and...?
Yes, we notify the residents.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there gonna be any work done to the street itself in terms of paving, following the completion of this work?
No, not -- in general, it's on a construction list for, I think, it's 2019, so it'll be an A-1 trench patch when we're done.
Where's the work done in relation to the roadway itself?
I believe it's gonna be close to the Crow Point or the travelway. I think it's headed west, Western travelway.
Yes.
In the width of the trench?
Shouldn't be much more than three to three-and-a-half feet. It's pretty good digging in there, it's pretty sandy gravel overall, so I don't think there's any large boulders or any ledge you have to encounter, so I think it should be straight cut, easy installation.
Motion?
If I could just add for the board, the last time you guys did some work in, particularly in that area of town, we got a number of calls from the contractors who left hay bales and other things, silt fences around, so I want to anticipate that ahead of time, try to make sure we can cut that off before the calls come to us.
I think that was the 2013 project. I believe the 2014 project went well, from the Wampe Tuck entrance down toward the Free Street well field.
And I recognize it wasn't Aquarian, it was the sub that you used, but if we could just follow up with that. I know it happens when we do the work too sometimes, but thank you.
Make a motion?
Please.
Motion to approve the request of Aquarian Water Company to install and maintain approximately 2,250 feet of new 12-inch high-density polyethylene water pipe in South Pleasant Street. This water main will originate at the driveway of 93 South Pleasant Street, where the entrance to Fulling Mill Pump Station is located, and continue to completion at the Main Street and South Pleasant Street intersection. This new main will replace an existing aged 14-inch raw main that is currently in service. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated February 24, 2016.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Good night.
Next on the agenda, public hearing on the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 126 feet of 2-inch gas main in Page Street. Do we have a representative from the National Grid, as well as our own DPW?
Thank you, Harry.
Good evening. Welcome. My name is Barbara Kelleher. I'm the acting permits representative for Tennis Region, and we're gonna start on Page Street?
Yeah, I believe.
Okay, and it's -- okay, so the National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to the locations of mains to install and maintain approximately -- I'm sorry, they broke up the streets, so I'm just on Page.
Yeah, the request came in, they grouped a couple of requests on one request plan, and to keep it simple, each grant is on each separate street, so she may be a little confused at last minute.
Well, okay.
Page is with Bel Air originally. On their write-up, you'll see that they've combined them on both, but for the sake of making a grant of each road in case something came up, it's separated.
And it goes to Witten?
Page is from...
Goes from Chute Ave.
To Bel Air, correct?
Bayview. Yeah, to Bel Air. A portion of Page was replaced recently on a Witten Ave installation.
Questions from my colleagues?
I just wondered, perhaps since a lot of these are related and we have an audience tonight, is it worth it for Harry to just explain the process that the town uses to coordinate utility work with our road paving?
Sure.
And it might also expedite each of these requests?
Well, we meet with National Grid on a yearly basis to discuss all road construction plans, and they formulate a plan. We look at the history of the main regarding leaks, the age of the main, and then we coordinate our efforts to try to replace the main that's -- guess we replace before we repave the road. If you would notice, I think the age of this one on Page Street is 90 years old. That's not uncommon, but it's -- would be uncommon if we repaved the road over a gas main that was 90 years old. And in some cases, there's main that's newer. I think Bel Air Road is like 1961, so that's only 50-plus years old, but it was still bare steel, so before we reconstruct the road, they're gonna replace that as well, so they really work well with us. This work, I anticipate, may commence as early as next week, being as a crew out there finishing the Witten Ave gas main. We plan on starting some of our underground drainage work, which is part of the reconstruction process of all those roads, probably the week after next, 28th of March, starting on Monday. Notice that we passed out probably within the next five or six days to all the residents. Regarding our work, and of course, the gas company notifying individual residents regarding their work when they were working in that area. Chute Ave and Bayview Avenue, those mains are gonna be replaced as well. Those are private ways and don't require a green location. They'll be connected to Page Street and then the intersection of Bel Air and Page. So, and we don't anticipate any road construction down, those are private ways, but they'll be done at the same time Page Street's done, and those residents will be notified as well.
How long for each project, Harry, if you know?
Yes.
How long?
I'm hoping that there's close to 4,000 feet of main that's gonna be put in overall for 3,500 feet, so I'm hoping six to eight weeks.
For the both of them?
Yeah. And we're not gonna wait for the entire gas main to be put in before we start, you know, paving and reconstructing and paving the rest of the roads, grinding them up. We'll probably do a section, let them clear, we'll move in. We'll get our drainage done as they're, you know, putting in the gas main, and so that won't slow that down, but as far as the reconstruction, they're all grinding up and regrading it, repaving it, we're not gonna wait till they're done. We'll do sections at a time. There's a lot of gas main we replaced over the last two or three years that are already in the ground, so that's not gonna, you know, bother our efforts at all.
Thank you.
I think it's also worth noting that our -- Harry and our Selectmen's Engineering Department work to manage their budget in a way that at this time of year, you have a lot of communities that are out of money, and, you know, they're waiting for their next fiscal year, so this is a time of year when oftentimes, we can get the labor to do that at a better rate, and so by holding on to some of our budget, we're actually allowing the dollars that we contribute as a community and dollars we get from the state to go a little bit farther. So, thank you for continuing to do that.
You're welcome. Is this full-depth reconstruction?
Yes. Being, just briefly, I don't want to bore you with the details, but, you know, as Otis Hill was, Steamboat Hill, if you will, I mean, it's all clay drumlin. Clay isn't really a good sub base unless you keep it dry. If not, it absorbs water and expands, that's why it's cracking and the heating in the wintertime, so that's why we're putting all these sub drains in, to keep the sub base dry. As long as clay stays dry, it's a good, strong structural fill for a sub base. We do the same thing in Bradley Park, we've done the same thing in Otis Hill. I don't think there's a crack in Otis Hill, that's been six years. So that's, you know, the type of construction we do, we'll grind up the road base, regrade, repave, and put the final wearing service on.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any more questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 126 feet of 2-inch gas main in Page Street. This gas main will originate from the intersection with Chute Avenue and continue under the paved surface of Page Street for the entire length to completion at the intersection with Bay Avenue. This gas main is replacing an existing 2-inch bare steel decayed main that is approximately 90 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated March 1, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, Bel Air. Is that the correct figure?
That was included, that was included in this. Bel Air is included. That was the public streets. There was the -- it was four streets.
They combined.
Okay. I think the next motion would be in order now.
Do you want me to make the next motion?
Please, if you would.
Make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain about 2,222 feet of 2-inch gas main in Bel Air Road. This gas main will originate from the intersection with Page Street and continue under the paved surface of Bel Air Road for the entire length to completion at House Number 45. This gas main is replacing existing 1-1/2-inch, 2-inch bare steel decayed main that is approximately 56 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated March 1, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Do you want the next one?
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 227 feet of 2-inch gas main in Parker Drive. This gas main will originate from the intersection with Mann Street and continue under the paved surface of Parker Drive for the entire length to completion near the intersection with Cushing Avenue. This gas main is replacing an existing 2-inch bare steel decayed main that is approximately 50 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated March 1, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ready for the next one? Okay, I'm making sure. Make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 580 feet of 2-inch gas main into Volusia Road. This gas main will originate from House Number 61 and continue under the paved surface of Volusia Road for the entire length to completion at House Number 15. This gas main is replacing existing 1-1/2-inch and 2-inch bare steel decayed main that is approximately 97 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated March 1, 2016.
Second.
Before we vote, is Crow Point done after this?
As far as gas main goes, I hope so.
Okay. Anything on -- off of Volusia Road, Manatee, anything like that?
Manatee and Waleka, the gas main that was up there has been replaced. They just installed a new water main recently, and that's one of the reasons why that's on the road, that hold name was on the road construction list. We worked with the town of Wentworth Water Department and the contractor that they hired to put that water main in to take the final patching, you know, fees and put them towards the repairing of Volusia Road and Waleka Road and Manatee Road.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Harry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Barbara, thank you.
You're welcome. I'd just like to take a moment and welcome Mr. Mayo aboard, and I wish him the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda, discuss the appointment of two police officers to the Hingham Police Department for the town of Hingham. Chief and deputy, would you join us at the table, please? Good evening, gentlemen. How are you tonight?
Very good.
Good.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for this opportunity. It's always a privilege to be here to appoint two new officers to our police department, and I'd like to thank all four applicants for participating and seeking employment from the Hingham Police Department. It's a very long process. They were all committed and spent numerous days participating through the intake process, background checks, internal police interviews, Board of Selectmen interviews, passing all health exams, psychological testing, and police officer physical ability testing. The Hingham Police Department realizes the importance of this decision in making this process. We adopted a format designed by the California Post, which stands for Police Officer Standards and Training, which is nationally recognized interviewing process. This system is designed to provide us with professional and unbiased interview process to select the best candidates for the job. The interview panel included five senior-rated officers, with myself and Deputy Chief Jones present to observe. Candidates were asked 40 questions, designed to measure experience, problem-solving, communication skills, interest and motivation, interpersonal skills, and community involvement. At the end of each interview, the detective that performed the background check would ask the candidate for any clarification questions that conflicted with information that they may have received from the intake or the background process. Based on the totality of the entire hiring process, I would like to recommend the following two candidates for a conditional offer of employment with the Hingham Police Department: Jonathan Vino and Albert Minovitz. Mr. Vino is an eight-year veteran of the Navy, and while serving, he attained the rank of Petty Officer 2nd Class. During this time, Mr. Vino was assigned to positions of leadership and managed a diverse group of sailors. During his police interview, he received a top score of 4.4 from our panel. Mr. Vino was unanimous first choice by all panel members. His answers to questions were well thought out and demonstrated his maturity and his decision-making ability. His answers often cited real-life problem-solving and leadership skills that he experienced during his naval career, in which he brought to his current job assignment. Mr. Vino also demonstrated that he understands the importance of community and his willingness to provide assistance to the citizens while performing as a police officer. He is actively pursuing his associate's degree at Quincy College. I am confident that Mr. Vino will be a good fit for the Hingham Police Department and will represent the town in a professional manner. Mr. Minovitz is a graduate of Mass Maritime Academy. He received his bachelor's degree in international marine business. During college, he obtained the position of Assistant Disciplinary Officer and Co-Executive Officer. Additionally, he completed two internships with the Mass Port Police and the Massachusetts State Police Underwater Recovery Unit. Mr. Minovitz was the second unanimous choice of the interview panel with a score of 3.96. During Mr. Minovitz's interview, he was able to draw on his educational and work experiences to provide genuine answers to questions that were posed him. It was evident that he has developed as a professional over the five years since graduating college and offer a level of maturity that was required of a police officer. In his current employment, he has worked with the diverse cultures, often encountering language barriers, and was still able to communicate effectively and accomplish the task at hand. Mr. Minovitz expressed a strong sense of empathy and understood how it would be helpful in his role as a police officer. He was familiar with all the Hingham Police Department's community policing and outreach programs and expressed an understanding of their importance. He was also -- he also personally demonstrated his commitment to the community by volunteering his time with the trustees of reservation at World's End and Way River Farm. I am confident that Mr. Minovitz is a well-rounded individual, and this is very -- and is very capable of transferring his current work and life experiences into becoming a successful police officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much. My colleagues have any questions or comments?
Chief, thank you again for speaking with me earlier today to answer some of my questions, but just a couple of thoughts more than questions. In terms of the choices you made, at least one of them we may require a bypass. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And I will say this, that I was very impressed with all four of the, you know, the candidates, as I'm sure my colleagues were, but what most impressed me were the length of experience that Mr. Vino and Mr. Galanoskas had regarding the department. In fact, when I looked at the criteria in terms of Mr. Galanoskas, because Mr. Vino was one of your recommendations, I was very struck by a person, I thought, who was dedicated himself to the criminal justice degrees, involvement as an internship with your program, and as good as everybody was, those two individuals really stood out to me to have the qualifications. And I know we talked earlier today, and we can -- people can reasonably disagree, and it's certainly, it's -- that would be my preference to choose those two candidates tonight, if that -- and I don't know what my colleagues want to do, but that, it's more based on their experience in the criminal justice system. I saw that them two is far more advanced than anybody else that I was looking at.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Thank you. This is my first exposure to the hiring process. I was impressed at how thorough it was. I was impressed by the insight that everybody who participated gave, and I was also really impressed with the candidates. It struck me that each of the four candidates brought some skills that would make them -- skills and experience that would make them a very effective member of the Hingham Police Department, and I don't think that -- I think that each person brought... And I don't think that, I think that each person brought, brought great things. Having said that, I also think that I take the recommendation, your recommendation, that weighs heavily on my mind because, because of your experience, and I, I support your recommendation.
And I would urge all these candidates to continue pursuing their career here, because they are, we're very fortunate that we always have a group of good candidates, and it makes this process hard. It was a lot of thought and effort put into this.
At the outset, chief and deputy, I'd like to extend my condolences for the loss of Trooper Clardy yesterday on the Pike. A loss of, of one officer is a loss to all, and I think it highlights the dangerous nature of the work that we're asking these men and women to do. I thought all of the people who interviewed did a fine job, and I thought that they brought with them a lot of great experiences and qualifications. I'm delighted when the recommendation that you make coincides with the impressions that I formed in that interview. In particular, Mr. Vino and Mr. Minovitz both, I thought, recognized the, the importance of the quality of empathy, which to me, as having worn the uniform of a Hingham Police Officer for over a decade, is critical. And I'm glad that that was recognized. In the interview process, in the background, I applaud, I compliment the, the fine work that the detectives did in their due diligence, and I think that we're lucky to have that skill set in place, because this is a critically important pick. I'm prepared to go forward with the recommendations that you've made. I thank the other two individuals for applying, and I echo the sentiments that you just expressed a moment ago. I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Jonathan Vino and Albert Minovitz as permanent police officers for the town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to, the following: Successful passing of the required medical examination; Successful passing of the required physical abilities test; Successful passing of the required psychological screening process; Successful passing of all other requirements for entrance into the police academy; Entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to payment of up to $3,000 recruit training fee; Successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief; And any and all requirements as mandated by law or regulation. Should the candidate fail to successfully complete all of these conditions, as determined in the sole discretion of the town, then this conditional appointment shall be considered null and void, and to the extent necessary, any offer of employment shall be considered rescinded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay. Next. We have, let's see, library roof and HVAC. Do we have someone from the library present?
We're running 10 minutes ahead.
Okay. Well, why don't we?
We have a couple of small items of business.
Yeah, why don't we do the one-day? Be able to do that without a fuss. You want to do that?
Yeah, which one we're doing? This last one?
Yeah, please.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Hingham Little League, care Richard Strachan for the Hingham Little League fundraiser to be held Lynchfield on June 17, 2016, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What else? Now, we have this MOU with Bear Cove Properties. I don't know whether that's something you want to have explained, or whether we can go with it. Are you ready?
I'd just like a little bit of our-
Sure. Okay.
I'd appreciate it. I received some explanation, but-
Okay. We'll hold off. Counsel's coming in anyhow. Let's see. We're running a little early, so we've got 20 minutes to kill. So you can either take a break and stroll around, or sit here.
Paul, do we want to take this one up?
Well, I'll, I'll step off of that, so that the two of you can go ahead and get your Barnes Wharf.
Oh, Barnes Wharf, yeah.
Probably go ahead and do Chris Phillips, too. I'm sorry?
They're going to talk about Barnes Wharf and Chris Phillips.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're actually going to keep going with a little bit of our business, so that we can keep things moving. You're welcome to stay for that or step out into the hallway.
So we, we have a vote on the extension of Barnes Wharf. Mary, what's your thoughts?
So I'm going to let the room settle a little bit. So just for the benefit of the public, the next, one of the possible votes on our agenda is to extend the time to negotiate the lease for Barnes Wharf. Selectman Hailey has recused himself from this conversation, so he has stepped away from the table. May I just ask, so that this can be heard by television, that if anyone is speaking in the audience, if you could please take conversations out into the hallway, so that it'll, it'll make this a little bit easier to hear for the television audience. Thank you. So what are your thoughts?
I, I mean, I'd like to have the negotiations take place. I, I don't know where we are with them.
Yeah. So the status, the status is that the Harbor Development Committee had a meeting earlier this month to go through the Wharf study. They did not form any conclusions. Their next meeting is April 13th. They hope to form some conclusions then, at which point they anticipate coming to our board and to the advisory committee. A month ago, when this was on our agenda, my, my feeling is that I think it's difficult to negotiate a lease on a Wharf when we don't, we still don't quite have a handle on the repairs that are necessary for the Wharf. And I think that will impact the negotiations in terms of responsibility and timing. So I'm, I'm, I am still committed to negotiating this lease, but I do think that there is a sequence here, and I think that we need to understand. We've, we've gotten a, a, a report from an engineer that Barnes Wharf is in need of what they call replacement, and that replacement cost is just under $2 million. One of the things that, that, as the selectmen liaison, and, and Paul and I, I think we were coming from the same place on this, was to ask the engineers if there were other options. There's kind of do nothing, replace it for $2 million. Is there anything in the middle? And we haven't received that information yet. I think that's going to inform the negotiations. So I'm happy and prepared to extend the time to whatever, whatever you'd like. I, I would say that I think that we have to be a little bit patient with this Wharf study. I think my preference would be to extend the negotiation time a little bit further, but if, if you're not prepared to, to do that, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Let me just clarify a couple of things, just so folks know. The, the lease that's being negotiated with, I think it's called Hingham Maritime and the, the town, also involves the rowing team at the high school, who has been using that facility. And it was always envisioned that we would preserve this, this area long-term for the folks in town, and also for the kids who use it, and also the public. So unfortunately, town meeting, I say fortunately, I guess initially, town meeting voted to us to go ahead with this, for reasons which we don't need to get into, had nothing to do with the Board of Selectment, we know that much. There was a delay of months upon months for any type of discussion, which, you know, which didn't sit well with me. We've been trying since September, really, because we thought over the summer people would get their act together, to get moving on this. We finally got a proposal at the end of November from the Hingham slash Lincoln Maritime, which is very far along, you know, but it is what it is. In the meantime, we've been trying to discuss, and Ted's been involved in this discussion, about whether we can proceed with negotiations to respond, to keep this thing moving. Our students are, I understand at this point are going to miss a portion of their season because of problems with, with the docks going in in a timely manner, which may or may not have been remedied. Here's, here's the bottom line for me, just so it's clear. As soon as I got the study about Barnes Wharf, it was, it was a harbor study, and it included Barnes Wharf, I looked at it, and it was basically, it's regarding sea level rising. It's not necessarily about the structure of Barnes Wharf. So what I did immediately was I called the engineer who wrote the report, and I asked him, I said, is there anything structurally wrong with this Wharf? He said, no. He said, I said, could we put the building on there to house this rowing, you know, group and whoever else? He said, absolutely, you could do that. This is not a study that, according to the engineer, is going to require any immediate repair work. In fact, I think it's pretty firm in structure. This is something that may not come to be for many, many years, maybe decades. We don't know that. So from my perspective, this is not an impediment to negotiation. This is something that came up. It was addressed by the engineer. I asked him very specific questions, because I'm not an expert. He made it very clear that we could do this, that the, the bottom line is when and if we have to pay for the repairs in this, this Wharf. I don't, from my conversations with this engineer, this is not something short-term. This is something that may go down, down the road, and it's all contingent upon sea level rising, for the most part. That's what the study was done for, and what were the needs in terms of sea level. So I agree to extensions, you know, because Mary and I both support this, this project in terms of the lease, but I am really at my wit's end in terms of what, what can I do to get this thing moving? So I would agree to a 30-day extension, but I don't see any reason for anything else. And I, and I mean that respectfully. I, there is no reason, I would like this negotiation to be taking place yesterday, tomorrow, next week, and I, I know legal counsel from the real estate, I spoke to Susan Murphy, she's available to start working on this thing. She was available back in January when I spoke to her. I just want to get this going. I think the kids deserve it, I think the town deserve it, and I think, you know, we should put our resources to that, that issue and get it started. So 30 days is about what I would like to do at the max.
Okay. Well, and, and, you know, I, I think we'll be having, as we've had, we're going to have, be probably having this same conversation in 30 days, and I'm happy to do that. This is a 30-year lease. This is a 30-year lease on a Wharf, and we need to make sure that we get it right. And the proposal of Hingham Maritime Center is to put a structure at the end of the Wharf that will be, as I understand it, self-supporting on some pilings. But it will make any future repairs to the Wharf more complex, it'll make them more expensive, and I'm not willing to go ahead and negotiate a lease after a quick conversation with an engineer on the phone. I want our Harbor Development Committee to vet this. I want our town engineer to vet it, because I want to get it right. Sea level change is something that is, we have to be prepared for it now, we have to contend with it, and again, we're, we're looking at 30 years. I would make one other point, which is that with respect to the timing of the beginning of the rowing program, and I know this very well, because one of my children participates in the rowing program, the status of the docks going in at the Hingham Maritime Center has absolutely nothing to do with the discussion that we're having here tonight. The, the relationship between Hingham Maritime and the high school rowing and sailing program is a relationship between those two parties. And I think to suggest that it has anything to do with this lease is, is really not appropriate, and, and this lease has nothing, has nothing to do with that. So I will make a motion to extend the lease.
Mary, before you do, I just want to, want to respond to that. I was just expressing my frustration when I hear that these kids don't have even the beginning of a discussion about having a lease that'll allow them access. I hear, I hear discussions from people all the time, and my daughter also was involved in the rowing program, and, and I hear complaints all the time about the lack of progress. All I'm trying to do is get this thing moving. So I'm not relying on a conversation with an engineer. I'm, I just conveyed that information to my town administrator, I conveyed it publicly. But we can actually negotiate and get over some of the legal hurdles while we're, while we're waiting for Harbor Development to get around to come back to us in April or May. This is almost a full year, and I've been told that people don't have time for that. That's what I was told, that they're too busy with other things. And I, that's a quote, and I don't buy it. So it's nothing to do with you, Mary, and it has nothing to do with the docks either, but I just want to get moving on this thing. Town, town meeting voted this last, last May. So that's all, you know? So if you want to make a motion about a date, that's fine.
But let's also remember that, you know, for, for the Hingham Maritime Center, the summer is the time when they're on the water, putting together great programs for, for Hingham residents and, and people in the South Shore. That's a very difficult time for them to devote to it. We got a copy of, of a marked-up lease right before Thanksgiving, which is when we get into budget and warrant season, and for many people who are here, we've had some other business that's come up that's taken a lot of our time and effort, too. And I think sometimes in government, you kind of have to strike the right balance of what is, what is urgent and what's important. And I think one of the things I've learned, as I've had the privilege of sitting in this chair, is that sometimes you may have the best-laid plans, but things come up. Last summer, we talked about dogs a lot at Bear Cove Park, because that was important to people. Tonight, we're going to talk about something that's important to people, and I think we have to be flexible on that. It doesn't mean that we're not going to get to everything, but I, I see a town hall staff that is working very hard on a number of different fronts, and I think there was a recognition that until the warrant got, got put to bed, which is next week, that it would be very difficult to devote the resources to working on this. I, I would like to think that we're going to be able to start to do that. I also think that these lease negotiations are going to take a little bit, a little while. I say that not to impose a delay on people, but to set expectations. I'd also make the point that this board, on many occasions, has made the commitment that if there is any uncertainty as to this board's commitment to making sure that the programs that operate out of Barnes Wharf can continue, this board has the ability and is prepared to issue any sort of a license with the Hingham Maritime Center, because we don't want anybody to have any anxiety that we're not committed to this. And, and it, if, if there's, if it comes to be that, that we should do that at some point, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
The good news, Mary, is you both and I are both committed to this, this whole process.
Yep.
And I'm just maybe a little more anxious because of some of the responses I received in my inquiries back in December, a month after we got the, we got the, the proposal, because I wasn't informed of it.
So I'm just gonna, so I'm going to make a motion to extend the date for finalizing the lease on Barnes Wharf until, so today is March 17th, Ted, so.
Be April 16th would be 30 days.
Okay. And is that?
Well, you have a two-week notice that you guys have asked for, so I mean, I think on April 16th, we'll be back acting you for another extension.
Okay.
I would strongly advise you going to the 60-year longer.
Until April 16th, 2014.
And that is the, is that the day after our meeting?
Take a check.
Just want to make sure. It looks like a Saturday.
I believe we'd be meeting on the 14th.
Right. So you want, you want to do it to the 16th, or it should be the 15th, Ted?
It doesn't really matter.
All right. Well, if your motion's to the 16th, I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Your next item, before Mr. Hailey comes back, is a vote to designate Chris Timson as the hearing officer.
Okay. Would you accept a motion?
Any questions? Yeah, as long as you have any questions, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to designate attorney Chris Timson as the hearing officer on the Chris Phillips matter, and designate him as special municipal, as a special municipal employee for this purpose.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Are they here from the library?
Library's here. So what do we do? Barnes, we do the...
Timson, too.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have one item to address before we get to the Avalon project, and that would be the matter of the library roof. Ms. Hancock, would you be nice enough to join us at the table?
Yep, right up here, please. Can they all have comments?
Great. Lucy Hancock, 15, Amber Roden, Hingham, a member of the advisory committee and capital outlay committee. And I'm here because I was watching on TV, and when nobody showed up for the library, I said, "I better run down there." I don't know, I didn't think we had to all be here.
Thank you.
This is the result of some discussions this week about an increase in a project for the library, and the capital outlay committee met today to approve the increased amount. Do you want to talk?
No, I was thinking you were asking for a contract, but I haven't seen the contract.
No, I guess you may have been expecting a contractor tonight, but I, were we supposed to bring someone tonight?
No, 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 no. There's a little confusion. I thought you were asking the board to sign a schematic contract, but you want to talk about the design changes.
I think all I'm here for, Mary, correct me, is to get approval from the Board of Selectmen for the increased capital amount for the library. So you have the recommended revised capital outlay plan from Libby, which was received today, capital met today, and approved the increased amount. So, my glasses, but we'll wing this.
I'm going to see the library director here, and we'll bring you up.
I apologize. I was out of the library all day. I just checked my email 15 minutes ago and saw that you had a meeting. So I'm scared, but I'm ready to answer your question.
I have stuff, too, if you want it.
Sorry, thank you.
Most of us have been working for the last week, Lucy and of course Linda, on the issue of the roof and some of the cost estimate changes. You need to vote tonight to approve whether or not you want to concur with advisory and capital outlays recommendation to increase funding for this project. And I can, you guys walk through a little bit about what the design changes are.
So the original, as you know, the original cost estimate, we estimated about $665. We have been working with Habib and Associates Architects out of Norwell, and they did a design. We also had Shakur, sorry, I'm going to catch my breath, I'm up the stairs. Shakur out of Weemuth, who did the HVAC portion. When they put it out for a cost estimate, the roof estimate came pretty much close to what we expected. The HVAC was higher than expected. We, Roger Fernandez and I, catch my breath, Roger Fernandez and I, called Habib to kind of find out why the HVAC portion was higher, and they said, since 15 years ago when we last had the project done, a lot of the codes had changed. So they had to do a number of upgrades to meet current codes. That's part of it. The other part is, we have two skylights in the roof on the old library side. One is the larger one over the reference room. There's a smaller one over the staff, third floor area. And so those are all original, they're leaking. They also recommended, if you're going to take them off and replace them, that they should be upgraded as well, otherwise you're going to put back kind of a bad piece onto the roof. They also suggested, there's a cost for $15,243 for the ceiling fans. We have the larger ceilings in those two areas, and what happens is, the way the HVAC is designed, is the returns are in the ceiling as well as where it blows out. So there's really air stratification. So the hot air goes out, stays up here, doesn't actually filter down. So in order to get the air to actually circulate, they suggest putting in six ceiling fans, four in the reference room, two in the AV room. That would help with the air stratification, which would help keep it a better temperature throughout. So the total construction cost was $1,075,216. That was $381,036 for the roof, $664,000, $685,000 for the HVAC, $29,495 for the general contractor. The general contractor part, they also said, so you have to have some sort of a general contractor. So for about $30,000, which is the $29,495, they would have a specific general contractor who would oversee both the roof and the HVAC. In their experience, both, if you didn't have the general contractor, you would have to designate the general contractor for either the roof or the HVAC, and they say, basically, neither make good general contractors, one would have to oversee the other because they have to coordinate the projects. So they suggest, for that money, it would be probably worth it to have a general contractor. So this brings, with the skylight replacement, the ceiling fans, brings the total up to There's a, obviously, difference between what we had asked for in capital outlay, primarily because of the changes when we expected the HVAC component to kind of be a straight-up replacement, and it turns out it triggered a lot of things that weren't a straight-up replacement. I will say in my experience that, anyone who's been here, that the roof has been leaking for a while in the library. The, you know, books obviously don't take well to water. We have a number of tarps up. We never know where the new leak is going to come from. The leak, you know, if you look at, well, can we break this out into doing the roof or the HVAC, and the answer is both leak. So if you just said, "Well, let's do one now, one later," it really wouldn't work because what happens is, every time it rains, we have to actually shut down a number of the air handling units because so much water comes through them. It minimizes the water that comes through, but it doesn't eliminate it. There's also, in addition to that, roof, you know, leaks that just come in through the roof at various places, and sometimes it springs a new leak. We're always putting buckets and tarps out. So the two projects really do go hand in hand in order to solve the problem of keeping water infiltration out of the building that we have.
And the skylights leak, too.
And the skylights leak, too. Well, the smaller one doesn't, but that's short money compared to the bigger ones. So unfortunately, it's just, you know, it's, the original roof material was from '86, so that's at the end of its life. The HVAC units are, they went in at about 2000. They have an expectation of, I think, 15 years of a lifespan. So they're at the end of their life. Everything's just aging out, and now we have water problems we're hoping to solve.
And one of the reasons why we encouraged the library, and they took it, to bid this project now, as you remember, Mary, now, is something we've done the last, I think, four or five years regularly with all departments, is better to know this news now before we go into town meetings so we can adjust the appropriation if necessary, rather than have to wait another year for the project.
And you've seen the adjusted capital budget that's in front of you. You see the difference in the library numbers.
And so the source of funding for this would be our unassigned fund balance. And so that would, using our unassigned fund balance to make up this shortfall, would still leave our fund balance above the threshold of our financial policy.
How much are we, I know we've talked about this.
Do the exact number.
Conversation last few days.
Increase?
Yeah.
For a $73,000.
How much are we taking on the assignment?
It would be an additional, I believe it's...
$470,000.
An additional $470,000. Our unassigned fund balance before any of the warrant articles under consideration had a $3 million surplus over the upper limit of our financial policy. If all of the appropriation articles and this capital outlay plan is approved, that would expend about $2 million of that $3 million surplus. But it would not all be spent in one year. For example, some of it is for the Lincoln School Apartments Capital Fund, some of it is for some other, for the fire station.
Thank you.
The good news is that this kind of a budget surprise, which is kind of a big one, can be handled by the town without having to open up operating budgets, which I think would be a much more painful way to pay for this.
So do you need a motion?
It would be appropriate for a motion to support the additional expenditure. From, you don't usually use the sources of funding, just the actual expenditure is fine.
Sure, I'll make a motion to act favorably on the capital outlay recommendation for the library roof and HVAC project.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both for coming in.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your support, too.
Thanks, Lucy, for coming down so quickly.
Thanks, both.
Good thing you were watching.
Right. Now for the matter that most of you are here for.
We wanted to wait on the MOU.
It's a little after 8 o'clock. And we're going to have a general discussion on the Avalon Shipyard project, Avalon 2, as it's come to know. This is how we're going to do it, ladies and gentlemen. The applicant is going to be invited to give us a brief presentation, not at the, not with the same amount of detail that it did last week to the ZBA, after which time our town council's going to join us at the table, and we're going to have an overview of the 40B process, because all of us have received a number of emails, perhaps from some of you who are in the audience tonight, expressing your concern and raising issues with respect to this particular project. I thought it would be helpful and instructive if we could hear from Susan Murphy, who's our real estate counsel, about the 40B process generally, after which time, anyone who wishes to speak may do so. I would only ask the following. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address, address your questions to the chair or to the board, and if you see a certain sense of repetition in the comments that are being expressed, try to factor that into whatever you're going to say, and then the board itself will follow up and conclude. Are there any questions from the audience? Okay, good. All right. Gentlemen from Avalon, if you'd be kind enough to identify yourself for the record, and then you can have the floor to make the presentation that you wish to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Michael Roberts. I'm with Avalon Bay Communities. I have with me Steve Schwartz, counsel with Gulston and Stores, and Lars Unyam, senior development director with Avalon Bay Communities.
That's not going to do it. I like that. This room...
So while we work through some of the technical lighting situations, I'll get started. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Certainly, I'm going to make a brief presentation, give you an overview of our proposal. There's some important things I want to cover, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Before I get started, I do want to thank everyone for their time tonight. Everyone's busy. It's St. Patrick's Day, and so we certainly appreciate people taking time out of their busy schedules to join us for this presentation. As you know, we were in front of the board last week, the zoning board. There were a lot of people there, a lot of familiar faces, so we appreciate you coming out again. And I think the important thing we'd like to note from a week ago was, it was important dialogue, and we appreciate that. And so we spent a long time listening, and the one thing I'd say, moving forward, even beyond tonight, we encourage more dialogue. So to the extent any of you want to get together with us, one-on-one, small groups, big groups, however you want to do it, if you don't have our contact information, we'll give it to you, and we're happy to facilitate that. The best way we can react is to just have dialogue. So that's an important part of the process for us. And that note as well, Mr. Chairman, we do thank you for your time out of your busy schedule to sit down with us earlier this week. We had a very lengthy discussion talking about the dialogue, and specifically, some of the things we may want to consider moving forward, which I'll touch on in a couple minutes. Very briefly, the Avalon Bay portion of the presentation, you're all familiar with us through our development and operation of Avalon at the Hingham Shipyard. In addition to that, we are a national company. We're publicly traded. Our only business is to build, own, and operate rental communities throughout the country. It's very important to us. We've been at this for over 20 years. It is all about reputation. It is all about how we execute our developments. We are a fully integrated company. Everything we do and touch is overseen by Avalon Bay Associates, whether it's development, construction, management. Having said that, this is a local business, and so we fully understand that. Everyone here today is here locally in the Boston area. Everyone you will deal with throughout the process are located here in Boston, and that'll be the case throughout the process. We're a phone call away for anything that may come up. We've been doing this in Boston for more than 20 years. We've never left this marketplace. We were talking about this in a meeting the other day. We have had something under construction in the greater Boston area continuously for over 20 years, regardless of where we are in the cycle. We currently have about 10,000 apartments in 40 different communities. A vast majority of these have an affordable component to them. We're going to talk about that a little bit. A little over half of them have been permitted under 40B, which is how we are proposing this development. So over the past 20-plus years, behind me is a list of communities we've permitted and developed. Arguably, I'd say we're the largest provider of new housing in the greater Boston area over the last 20 years, and certainly we think that's the case as it relates to developing mixed-income communities such as the one we are proposing. We're very proud of our reputation. It is a long list. There are a lot of towns that we've dealt with. We've done repeat business in towns. We've been asked to come back to different towns. Our hope is that eventually we can do repeat business here in Hingham. These are high-quality communities, and the affordable programs are very attractive. It's a very attractive execution of including affordable within market-rate housing. So one of the mixed-income developments is Avalon at the Hingham Shipyard, I think we're all familiar with. 235 apartments, mix of townhomes, manor homes, and a mid-rise building, we're going to talk about in a minute, completed in 2009. Next slide. So who lives in our communities? A lot of different household types. We like to describe it as both ends of the homeownership spectrum. On one end, you have young professionals. A lot of them have lived in town or in the nearby area. They want to stay in town, they're not quite ready to buy a home, and so they'll live with us. On the other end of the spectrum, our empty nesters, people who have raised their families in the town or nearby area, want to stay in town but want to enjoy the flexibility and lifestyle of a high-end rental community. And then there's everything in between. We have some statistics on people transitioning. That's a big component of who lives in our communities. Certainly at the Shipyard, we've had folks live with us and then move to Hewitt's Landing. We've had people live with us and then buy a home in Hingham. We've had people live with us between homes. So there is a need that is fulfilled with rental communities as well as it relates to households in transition. There's also the affordable component. You know, obviously, everyone is welcome to the affordable apartments, subject to the income restrictions, but what we found, actually statistically, senior citizens are a big component of our affordable homes. So that's a part of the marketplace that is specifically fulfilled with the affordable Within Avalon at the Hingham Shipyard, we do have a mid-rise building that we're showing in the slide here. That is the building that has the affordable component in it. We show it for a couple reasons. This was approved as a LIP, Local Initiative Program, which is essentially a 40B deal. Our proposal will, is proposed to be 40B, and as such, a... And as such, 100% of the units in this 91-unit building count under the subsidized housing inventory. That would be the same, the same dynamic with our proposal as well. And then also, as it relates to some of the impacts of this building, there's a lot of talk about traffic last week. I think it's important to note, the Shipyard itself was designed as a mixed-use, transit-oriented development. And as part of that, it's a very walkable community, you have the commuter ferry. The expectation is that there would be fewer cars. And on average, a typical community in a suburban location would have two cars per apartment, that's kind of the rule of thumb. We have one and a half. So it's a pretty significant decrease in the number of cars that are existing at the Hingham Shipyard, and we'd expect that to occur with our proposed development as well. Kind of proof positive to the transit-oriented development nature of the site. The other aspect that was discussed was school impacts. It's interesting to note, the higher-density buildings attract, on average, fewer school-aged children. And that's to be expected, the more formal buildings, elevated buildings. Families are absolutely welcome in our communities, they're a big part of what makes our developments and our communities within our developments. But we have found the higher-density, mid-rise buildings do have fewer students. In fact, in this particular instance, we have 91 apartment homes and 14 school-aged children. That's a rate that is less than half of the number of school-aged children in the lower-density component of our existing development. So on to the site, the Hingham Shipyard. 130 acres, hard to believe. Less than a decade ago, that was, that was the existing conditions. We've got the GSA building there in the middle of the slide, and you can see our site, Building 19, along Route 3A. So that was 10 years ago, I think it is, I'm not going to go into great detail here, but important to note, 75 years ago, there's an incredible history to this site, I think everyone is familiar with. You know, back in, during World War II, over 10,000 people showed up here every day to build, to build ships at a record, record, record pace. A lot of the details are actually located in and among the Hingham Shipyard. Part of the historical panels located throughout the Shipyard, if you hadn't had a chance to take a look at those, please do at some point. It is a great, great history to the site. This slide also kind of steps back and shows the overall master plan of the Hingham Shipyard. Over 300,000 square feet of retail and restaurants and office space, the Marina, Hewitt's Landing, and Avalon at the Hingham Shipyard. This slide shows our site, located on the bottom right, the Building 19 building, I think everyone is familiar with. On the existing site is the Building 19 facility, 152,000 square feet. And so what I want to do is, very briefly, I'm going to go over the original proposal. But more importantly, I want to go beyond that a little bit and talk a little bit about our discussions and ongoing reaction to some of the commentary. So as proposed, Avalon, Hingham Shipyard Two, this is an overview of the building layout. 250 apartments, an affordable mixed-income proposal, mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartment homes. Parking, it's five levels of building over one level of parking structure. The massing of the building, as originally proposed, we had kind of taken our mid-rise building that I had talked to in the prior slides and used that as kind of a guide. We also put in the old GSA building height for reference, which was, had mixed, mixed reviews in our presentation last week. But that's just kind of the direction of the massing from the original proposal. Project benefits, obviously, a substantial investment of over $80 million in the community, 100% of the apartments counting towards the subsidized housing inventory, building permit fees, mitigation fees, infrastructure fees, annual property taxes, and annual maintenance and service contracts. So a list of kind of the financial benefits of our original proposal. In addition, these are nice places to live. We're very proud of the product that we deliver. They have very attractive aesthetic inside and out, great amenity package, outdoor amenities, pool lounge areas. Indoor amenities include fitness center, gathering areas, lounge areas as well. And then the apartment interiors, modern floor plans, modern appliances, high-end finishes, most units will have an outdoor space, balcony space, along with the indoor space. And I'd also add, these are green buildings, very sustainable buildings, using modern technology and modern, sustainable elements. What we are building today are far superior in that regard than what we were even building five years ago, or in 2009. You'll notice I didn't show the rendering of our prior proposal, I think that's self-explanatory based on the conversations and the dialogue last week. And going back to our conversation, Mr. Chairman, we took, we took that conversation to heart, and we appreciated the frank discussion. And from our perspective, our reaction is about refining the architecture, refining the massing, and refining the density. We have been working diligently. Our goal is to have something to propose or to present tonight, we're not there yet. But we do want to talk to the goals that we are working towards as we speak. Lars? Architecture and massing, this is just a montage of the architecture of the existing housing at the Shipyard. It's interesting, there's a, there's a wide variety, obviously. We're working through elements that tie more to this than what you saw last week. And so that's a big part of, of what we're trying to, what we're trying to do. So architecturally, we're looking to show something that looks much different. From a massing perspective, obviously, height was a big, a big issue. So we're looking to lower the height of the building. We are going to work towards kind of using, not going above our mid-rise building, but using our mid-rise building as a guide for height. In addition, we heard a lot about the podium aspect and having the on-grade parking. While we're still going to have that as a component, we're going to bring the building down to the street level. And so, the street views and how this building presents itself, our goal is to make it more pedestrian-friendly, more street-view friendly, like the rest of the Shipyard. And so, that's a big element of what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish. In addition, as it relates to the massing and architecture, you take a look at the roofline, I think that was a big, a big component. And so, we're looking to lower, lower the height, change kind of the geometry of the building to create a more interesting roofline, but also add pitched roofs. So, taking kind of that architectural feel from the rest of the Shipyard and incorporate it here. And then finally, really as a result of those moves, lowering density. And so, again, it's a work in progress, but we see, you know, with making some of these changes, where, you know, under 200 units, we're, you know, say 190 apartment homes. That's kind of the range we're looking at, in line with, with the design changes we're talking about. Just very briefly and in conclusion, obviously, fewer homes are going to have fewer impacts. So, obviously, it's fewer units. We took a, a look at the vehicle trips and there's certainly, it's a, it's a very important aspect of what, of what we're building. Obviously, we have a formal report, the town has done their assessment. When you look at the peak traffic, at 250 apartments, we were one trip per 29 seconds, 30 seconds. With the lower density, it would be more like one trip every 40 seconds. Doesn't sound like a lot, but I think when you do the modeling, I think it will have a meaningful impact. And then as it relates to students, we had projected, based on our experience on the mid-rise building, about 40 students. And that would be reduced more towards 30 students in our proposal. The other part of that is distribution of age. I think we showed that in our slide last week. We find about 50% of our students are grade school and 50% are middle and high school. So, they would be spread out over, over the different, different age ranges. So with that, that's what we've been working on. Again, we do appreciate everyone's time, we do appreciate the dialogue, we are working towards presenting something more formally in line with what we just described, and at this point, we look forward to any questions or comments.
I want to thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Clearly, you were listening. Look forward to seeing what flows from that when you make the presentation to the ZBA. At this point in time, I'd ask the real estate council to join us at the table, because I take an overview of the 40B process.
Yes.
The constraints, the deciders, simply the facts as to the procedure will be helpful in understanding.
Thank you, Steve. To order.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify when the?
The dynamics.
Proposal to the ZBA is going to take place?
We, we will shortly. It's a work in progress, I'm sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Identify yourself for the record.
Susan Murphy, I'm Special Town Council for Real Estate and Land Use Matters. So, I've been asked to provide some background on three things primarily. Legal status of Hingham's subsidized housing inventory, planning around affordable housing, and the permitting process for Chapter 40B affordable housing projects. Each of those could be a very lengthy discussion, which is not the intention for tonight. And with respect to a lot of the process and the permitting process, it's going to be discussed in very minute detail at the zoning board, a lot of it next week. But then, over the course of the board's hearings, so I'm going to touch on it, but I'm not going to go into it in a lot of depth, although I'm happy to respond to any of the board's comments. So I want to start first with the subsidized housing inventory. The acronym is SHI, so I'll be using that a lot. The subsidized housing inventory is a list compiled by the Department of Housing and Community Development, commonly referred to as DHCD, and it contains the number of qualified affordable housing units in every city and town in Massachusetts. That number is, of units is also reported as a percentage of the town's total housing stock, every housing unit in the town, and that's number of total housing stock is only adjusted each 10 years on the census, based on the census. So the current subsidized housing inventory that is produced by DHCD states that 6.3% of Hingham's total housing stock is eligible to be included as affordable housing on Hingham's SHI, or Hingham's inventory. However, the town has maintained for many years that the town's SHI exceeds 10%, which is also referred to as the statutory minimum. DHCD has consistently rejected the town's position on the SHI, and the reason for this disagreement dates back to the approval of the Linden Ponds project and how the units in that project are counted on the SHI. So now I'm just going to give a little background as to how we got into this disputed number with, with DHCD. So, the explanation on what is commonly referred to in Hingham as the 10% issue is a somewhat involved discussion. I'm going to try to provide a brief summary tonight, but I also want to invite everyone, there is brand-new, live this afternoon, on the Zoning Board of Appeals website, a link that's called subsidized housing inventory. And on that link, you can access a copy of the subsidized housing inventory, DHCD's current 40B regulations, and the most relevant legal documents from the first decision related to Linden Ponds through the most recent Housing Appeals Committee interlocutory order. So, we have tried, Emily Wentworth worked on that today with the IT department, in order to try to make all of those documents available. And it would take quite a long time, considering all of the exhibits that are on some of the documents, to read through them all, but it's much more thorough than I can provide for the board tonight. But I'm going to, I'm going to try to give some background. So, under DHCD's policies that were in place when Linden Ponds were approved, 100% of all rental units in a project count towards a town's SHI, even though only 25% are actually affordable. And in case, and in fact, that policy is still there, it's just been modified over the years, since Linden Ponds. But that, it was there, with no qualifications, no asterisks, that was the policy. The purpose of the policy of counting 100% of units, even though only 25% are actually affordable, is that the state would like to encourage rental housing, because that is not built as frequently as ownership housing. So after Linden Ponds was approved, the town requested that all of that project's rental units be counted towards the town's SHI. However, in 2005, DHCD notified the town that it would only count 25% of those units. In 2006, the town sought a declaratory judgment against DHCD to require inclusion of 100% of those units on the SHI. However, in 2008, a few years later, the Supreme Judicial Court dismissed Hingham's complaint on a procedural basis and did not address the substantive question. They said, "We're not going to answer the question." So the zoning board has elected, since then, the zoning board has elected to send what we now refer to as the 10% letter, which I'll discuss more in a few minutes, in connection with its two most recent applications. In both cases, both DHCD and the Housing Appeals Committee have ruled against the town. The first case was a 40B project proposed by Avalon Bay on Recreation Park Drive. Because the town purchased the property, the town's appeal of the HAC's interlocutory order was deemed moot, and it was dismissed by the Superior Court. So once again, a substantive review of the, by the court of the town's claim to be at 10% did not occur. The second case is known as the SEB project on Main Street. The zoning board, again, argued that the town is at 10%. And there is a current pending interlocutory order from the Housing Appeals Committee, in which the Housing Appeals Committee says, "No, the town's not at 10%." However, the permit that was issued for the project, approved the project with conditions, that was appealed by the developer. And that case, that appeal of the permit is still pending at the Housing Appeals Committee, therefore, under the regulations, the town cannot appeal the interlocutory order that says we're not at 10% until the appeals case is completed, and all of that is still pending. So we have a current pending kind of live case sitting at the Housing Appeals Committee. The town boards have recently received a number of requests that the town appeal the Linden Ponds decision. And as I've explained, the town made two direct challenges to that decision, and both were rejected. Two additional appeals of the Linden Ponds unit count through the 40B application review process have been taken, and the one that's currently pending is the, is the SEB. So those are all of the legal actions that the town has taken since approximately 2003 to try to get a final determination on this issue. So now, the zoning board must decide for each 40B application whether to assert the town's 10% position. To date, no decision that has been issued on the 10% issue has gone in the town's favor. Although the town maintains in good faith that its cause is just, the legal precedents in other 40B cases generally give deference to the findings of the administrative agency, and these cases are decided generally in favor of approving the originally proposed affordable housing project. So, you know, that's what the town faces in these various appeals. So that's a summary of where we are on the subsidized housing inventory and how we got to this current dispute with DHCD. I want to move next to many of the comments that the town boards have recently received express a concern that the town is not engaged in adequate planning for affordable housing, and I've just been asked to touch on that very briefly. So efforts to address affordable housing have been ongoing in the town for decades, including the creation of the Factor Park Housing, operated by the Housing Authority, the creation of the Housing Partnership, which the creation of the Housing Partnership, which was recently replaced with the Affordable Housing Trust, each of which put forward a number of town-sponsored initiatives, including acquisition of the Lincoln School Apartments. However, zoning initiatives, most notably zoning that would allow affordable housing known as 40R Smart Growth Districts in appropriate locations in Hingham, were rejected by town meeting. So it was brought to the voters, and the voters said, "We don't want that in Hingham." Likewise, efforts to create accessory apartments within the town have stalled numerous years. The Community Planning Department is actively working on updating the town's master plan, and as part of that effort, a housing needs assessment was recently produced, and that's available from any of the planners on the second floor can provide that to anyone who's interested in looking at that housing needs assessment. It's also worth noting that the 40B regulations create what's called a safe harbor for towns from 40B projects for towns that create and comply with an affordable housing production plan that is approved by DHCD. The town produced and submitted to DHCD such a plan after Linden Ponds. DHCD only had a few comments on the plan. However, one of those comments required the town to reflect DHCD's count of only 25% of the units at Linden Ponds, excuse me for my voice today, it's cracking, rather than the 100% count claimed by the town. Since the town did not make that change to the plan, the affordable housing plan could never be finalized. So that's another impact of the ongoing Linden Ponds issue. And so finally, I want to summarize the review process for a 40B application after it is filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning board is the only town board that is authorized to hold hearings and to issue a decision on a 40B project. The 40B regulations govern the conduct of zoning board hearings for affordable housing projects. There are specific timeframes in which the board must act. The regulations also address matters that are within the zoning board's jurisdiction, including addressing local concerns such as health and safety. With respect to the 10% issue, under Section 56038A of the regulations, the zoning board makes the determination whether or not to send the so-called 10% letter to the applicant and DHCD. The applicant then has 15 days to respond, and DHCD has an additional 30 days to review all the materials they receive and issue its decision. The zoning board has the burden of proving that the statutory requirement has been met and the factual basis for that position, including any documentation that supports its position. So it's not just a letter that says the town believes it's at 10%. It's pretty lengthy. The one that was sent on SEB was 19 pages long, and that was prepared by the town's litigation counsel. That is also on the ZBA's website at that link. If either the zoning board or the applicant wishes to appeal DHCD's decision, so they don't like what DHCD says, we already know twice what DHCD has said to Hingham, then whichever party wants to appeal it has to appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. However, once the Housing Appeals Committee issues its decision, and that's the interlocutory order like we have now in SEB, the zoning board is still required, under the regulations, to complete a full hearing of the project, and no appeal of that order can happen until the hearing is concluded. So it's not a case that the zoning board can say, "We think we're at 10%, so therefore we will deny and go from there." There is a very lengthy process that the regulations lay out, and it requires that a full hearing happen over the course of that process. So finally, the zoning board has only held one hearing so far in this application. It's brand-new from the zoning board's perspective. It has until March 25th, which is next Friday, to decide whether to send the 10% letter. The next hearing is scheduled for next Wednesday, March 23rd. At that hearing, the zoning board would vote to send the 10% letter if it elects to do so prior to the March 25 deadline. But like I said, this last section about everything that the zoning board needs to do and its process and what governs how it runs its hearing is something that the zoning board is very well versed in, and the chairman has run, Joe Fisher has run, multiple 40B hearings, and he does an excellent job of discussing it and walking through it for the public that attends those hearings. So that's just a summary. I'm trying not to keep it too long. I hope I at least touched on the most relevant points that you cared about for tonight.
Susan, could you?
Yeah. Thank you very much, first of all.
Susan, if an appeal is going on and another 40B application were come to the town, what is the town's obligation?
Each, because the regulations require the zoning board to make that decision on a, for each application, whether or not to send the letter, and each election is only specific to that project. So if it makes, there have been more than two 40B permits in Hingham since Linden Ponds, and that election has not been made every time. So it's only with respect to that project that it's being raised, but since we, it would be, so for the sake of argument, if the town, the zoning board was to choose that path in connection with this application, it would be running parallel. Now, it's possible that at some point in the future, if they were all taken to the, it's, you know, each appeal, that they would end up at the same court at the same time? SEB is so far ahead that I don't know that that's likely, but they could, and then maybe at that point they can be joined, but at this point in time, we'd be, the town would be defending parallel litigations, depending on how many applications were pending before the town, and if the board elected that path in each case.
Thank you.
So Susan, one other thing you didn't touch on, maybe, I think a lot of the folks here that are interested in, what is the selectman's role in this timeline with the ZBA in terms of what are our options?
Right. So the way it's set up, the zoning board, as I said, the regulations put all of the authority in the zoning board, and then all other boards of the town are defined, there's a defined term called local board, and it's basically any other board in the town. And so any other board in the town may provide input to the Zoning Board of Appeals with respect to merits of the project. The planning board does it on a regular basis for every 40B, excuse me. If there's a board of health issue, a concom issue, they will always weigh in with a letter or some sort of presentation to the board. The Board of Selectmen is within the definition of local board, so you can provide input in that way. I'm sorry, I have a little laryngitis. My understanding is that the vote before the board tonight is whether or not to authorize the legal resources, because as you know, the policy of the board is that if it's going to exceed a certain legal fees threshold, then it's beyond Ted's authorization, and it requires your authorization to do that. But, you know, it's, as I said, the Board of Selectmen is defined as a local board, and so if the board wished to give any substantive feedback on aspects of the project, that's something that, you know, the board could do. But at this point, because the board, it is likely that the cost, you know, just with the hearing process, so just for Real Estate Council, my role, and definitely if litigation council were engaged by the zoning board with respect to the 10% issue, it would exceed the threshold. That's something that the zoning board needs authorization for before the 25th. They'd need to know that by the 23rd.
They need to know that we would support them if they opted to go that route.
Yes.
But they'd have to know by the 23rd.
Well, that's their next meeting because the deadline for filing the letter is the 25th. So they would need to know they had access to council to go through that process before they started spending the town's legal budget.
That's before our next meeting.
Yeah, that's next Friday. I don't know when your next meeting is.
If the last one was a 19-page document, I'm assuming that there's a little time that's going to have to be put into preparing that letter
Right.
...before submission, so we...
Right. I mean, the other one is...
We have it on a vote for you tonight for that purpose.
Yeah. The other one's a few years old, so it's going to need updating. It preceded even the dismissal of the original Avalon case from Rick Park Drive. That case was still pending even when the SEB letter went out, so it needs a fair amount of updating.
Thank you.
Susan or Ted, what has been the selectman's input on prior occasions when the ZBA has sent the 10% letter? My understanding was, at least in some of those occasions, that the selectman had given some either advice or guidance or suggestion, and I don't know if that's by way of emotion or just by discussion.
You know, it may have been discussion. I have to say that the first time, with the first Avalon Bay project, I was not in this role at that time. There was former town council acting on it. So I'm not aware of what the discussions were, although, you know, obviously there were discussions around it, and obviously there were negotiations that led to the town purchasing the property. On the second project, SEB, I, all I recall is that that was a request for council. I didn't attend any meeting, and the developer never sought to make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen or try to, you know, bring out the merits of its projects to the Board of Selectmen. It never chose to do that. So I don't know that you were ever in this position, that you got a full presentation and then had an ability or had the information to weigh in. So I believe there was a request for council, and that was approved. SEB did come to the Board of Selectmen and...
That was an appeal process regarding...
Yeah, that was related, a related issue on the shade trees, but it wasn't prior to the 10% letter and all of that. So each one kind of evolved differently on its own.
I can take you back to 2010, Paul, as far as I go in this role, and the board has never taken a public vote position on a 40B project.
So what have you, since I've been on the board and we had a 40B, which I think is SEB,
Yep.
You and I had spoken about this issue, and you asked me what my position was. I'm assuming, did you communicate that to the board, that I was not in favor of the 40B?
Communicate it to which board?
The ZBA. I just don't know what you did with the information. In other words...
I think it was pretty much common knowledge at the time that all, the entire boards was upset about it and the entire community, so I don't know if I, I don't, I can't comment right now, Paul, to tell you whether or not.
Fair enough.
I went down to talk to the ZBA and said, "Paul Gannon told me this." I don't recall that. But I do feel that the flavor of the board's position was pretty well-known at that point in time.
And I can't speak to this because I haven't read the minutes from 2010 or whatever year that was, but I believe that every time there's a vote in front of you, the town administrator or someone explains this is what it's about, and I'm assuming that the board members indicated, may have indicated at that time, their leanings on that project, but like I said, I haven't read the minutes, so I don't want to...
You're saying on the vote to authorize...
Yeah, that, you know, because, right, I mean, when I read your meetings, I see, oh, there's a vote on this, oh, you know, and Ted gives you an explanation, well, what are we voting on? And I think that may have been the case on that one, but I think it was...
There was not a lot of discussion.
It was limited around the vote for council.
When you and I talked on Tuesday, there was also the indication that it could be, there could be a vote by motion in terms of if we had some type of, after discussion, what we wanted to do as a board in terms of this issue.
Right. If the board, the board, it's an agenda item, so any matter that's on the agenda that the board's had some discussion about, if, you know, the board feels that it would be appropriate to say something in addition, of course, that's always your prerogative.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you want me to stay?
Stick around for a little bit.
No question.
All right. Before we begin, I think we've had a fairly detailed overview by council for the 40B process in general. And I know that you're here tonight for the Avalon project in particular, but this is something that the town faces for more than just this project, ladies and gentlemen. And I think it's very important for everyone in this room to understand that the 40B tool used by developers is alive and well in this community. And in fact, next week on our agenda is a discussion with a company out of Texas called Alliance. And that company proposes to build a 304B project in the vicinity of where you live. So in addition to what we're dealing with here, we have another 40B that's even larger. We have a 40B in the center of town. We have two 40Bs that are being talked about in South Hingham. So this is an enormous challenge for us as a town. You've heard the 10% discussion. We'll get into that a little bit later. But we're thinking about this project in particular. We're soliciting your thoughts, your views, but we have a very big picture that we have to consider as we process all of that. So I'd ask you, as not only residents of the shipyard or Bradley Woods or wherever you live nearby, but as Hingham residents generally, to appreciate the pressure that this town is facing on this particular issue and the obdurate position that the Commonwealth's Regulatory Agency that addresses this issue is taking. And I'm sure that when this process spins itself out, this hearing, the hearing that was held by the ZBA last week, as well as the statements that were made by officials, will be taken into consideration. So what I'm hoping is that as you speak, there'll be an air of restraint. We've heard the developer. I don't know what he's going to ultimately propose, but it seems to suggest to me that the developer heard the complaints and the concerns that were raised at last Thursday's meeting. So with that, for those of you who would like to speak, I invite you to raise your hand. Identify yourself by name and address. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Douglas Thompson. I'm a resident of Hingham of 19 years. I live at 109 HMS Stainer Drive. And I do completely appreciate the magnitude of the issue of 40B for the town, and I'll speak personally that this project, I think, is very, 40B is not the issue for me. I think 40B has a place in the town, but 40B has a place as part of a planned master plan. And so I would like to see the town address that, and hopefully that helps the town navigate the multiple projects it's facing. I'm also a member of the Hewitts Landing, because I live in Hewitts Landing, so I'm a member of the Hewitts Landing Condominium Trust Board, and so I'm here tonight representing So on March 15th, we emailed you a letter regarding the Avalon to comprehensive permit application and our concerns. As we stated, to most residents, public hearings concerning land use and matter, land use matters are foreign, and public hearings concerning real estate are under Chapter 40B are frightening. That said, we took great comfort in the knowledge and perspective offered by the planning board in connection with its review of the overly dense and poorly designed development proposed for the Building 19 site and the host of adverse impacts that will be reflected or be felt by the residents of the Hingham Shipyard, Bradley Woods, and all of the town residents who shop, dine, and rely on public transportation at the shipyard. We understand that 40B is a complex provision of the law that gives developers the right to override our local zoning bylaws, but Sarah Corey's reasoned summary of the issues and impacts associated with the proposed development serves as an initial roadmap for the town to evaluate the application and to formulate appropriate conditions to attach to a comprehensive permit in the event the development must be approved. Based on what we learned from the first night of the hearing, the project presents numerous concerns that must be presented to and carefully considered by the zoning board so they can be addressed properly. I will not read the detail of each of our concerns, as we've reflected that in your letter, but we'll mention them so they are duly noted here tonight. These concerns include but are not limited to traffic, resident safety, protecting our property, and environmental issues. We appreciate your reading this letter and listening to our concerns. We're counting on your support to protect our neighborhood. As Mr. Gannon, who was able to attend the meeting last week, said to us, "I have your back," and we truly appreciate that. On a project this large, we certainly hope all of you do as well. We would appreciate it if you would, and respectfully request, that you would authorize, vote to authorize the legal resources the zoning board needs in order to send the 10% We want you to impress upon them how important... We want you to impress upon them how important it is to protect our neighborhoods, as was done for the Hingham neighborhoods, like Recreation Park Drive, where the town went so far as to purchase the land. The South Pleasant Street, on, or, on South Pleasant Street, where the town is contemplating purchasing the Lennar property, to preserve it as open space, and protect it from a hypothetical 40B that hasn't even been filed yet. All of this, in a part of town that has significant open space. In this regard, we would request that you support the zoning board to send the letter to the DHCD, notifying them that the Town of Hingham has more than 10% of its housing inventory affordable under Chapter 40B statute and regulations. In the same manner the town did in connection with the Avalon's most comprehensive, or most recent comprehensive permit application at Recreation Park Drive. As trustees for Hewitts Landing, a community of 150 homes, with assessed property values in excess of $100 million, and a property tax levy that's in excess of $1 million every year, and that's every year, not just a one-time contribution, such as the Avalon rumored funding of a fire truck that would be necessary to, for life safety to support their building. We urge you to support the zoning board, to file the 10% letter with DHCD as soon as possible, and as well, approve the legal fees. The ZBA needs your support, so it can deny the application, or fashion appropriate conditions to protect the residents of the shipyard and the Town of Hingham. You have our votes, and we need you to take, to make sure that the town has the tools it needs to protect itself. We realize that you have busy schedules, but we ask that you attend ZBA meetings whenever possible. Your presence at these hearings are very important to us, and gives us the confidence that the residents of our community will be well-presented by our elected leaders. And one last comment I have, is that it's great that Avalon has told us that they want a dialogue, and that they're willing to initiate a dialogue. It's unfortunate that they, a company that's done this for 20 years, as they state, waited until launching a program, instead of coming out and reaching out to the community around it, especially our neighbors, with, before actually getting here. So, we thank you for your attention to this matter that's of critical concern to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there anyone else who'd like to say something? Yes, yes? Ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Kaplan, and I live at 8 Baker Hill Drive in Hingham. I do not object to affordable housing. In fact, I think it is a critical component of a town's housing stock, helping to ensure that our teachers, firefighters, and other valuable members of our community have an affordable place to live. I do object to developers who seek to take undue advantage of the state's Affordable Housing Law, Chapter 40B, proposing outrageously incompatible projects that serve only to line the pockets of the developer. I do object to projects that turn a blind eye to the reasonable zoning, environmental, and other standards established by a community. Such projects do not benefit either the future residents of the proposed project, or the town's existing residents, who work so hard to make their town a strong community and great place to live. Developers like Avalon are the reason there has been so much debate about Chapter 40B, and its approach to affordable housing. Perhaps someday, the pendulum will swing in the other direction, and developers like Avalon will no longer be able to hold towns hostage. But today, Hingham is a community-held hostage. We truly are a town under siege. You need only know that the developer has requested an amazing 24 waivers or exceptions from our local zoning, in order to understand that Avalon is not acting, in our judgment, in good faith. If granted, these requested waivers will severely impact the men, women, and children who call Hingham home. While I am encouraged by the developer's discussion tonight about proposed revisions, we have yet seen any specifics, and it's important that we continue to hold Avalon's feet to the fire, to ensure the building they propose to build is indeed compatible with the Town of Hingham. The purpose of local zoning is manifold: to lessen congestion in the streets, to conserve health, to secure safety, to prevent overcrowding, to avoid undue concentrations of population, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewerage, schools, parks, and open space, to conserve our natural resources, to encourage the most appropriate use of land through the city or town. All of these things. And yes, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels. This Board of Selectmen has the opportunity to ensure our seat at the table is not only to rubber-stamp the developer's outrageous proposal. This Board of Selectmen has the opportunity to put legitimacy back into the review process. We voted for you, and now we need you to stand with us. I hope you will take all necessary action to ensure this project does not go forward as proposed. I respectfully ask that you authorize the legal resources that would allow the ZBA to appeal the state's determination regarding the percentage of Hingham's affordable housing stock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, before we continue, perhaps you could tell us what the standard of review is that's controlling the ZBA, when they deal with a 40B submittal?
There's, there's actually about three pages of standard of review in the regulations. I would like to say that there's been a number of concerns raised about the number of waivers. I have asked the zoning administrator to look at this. She's going to compare it to, she's making a comparison to other 40B projects that have come before the town, but she has told me that she believes that there are far less waivers requested for this project than there have been for most of the other 40B projects in the town. It's just the nature of 40B projects. If, if, if it's an industrial site, as this is, and you want to put residential, which is not allowed, that's a waiver. If it's, so, every, they're required to list every single waiver of every regulation. So, it's the zoning regulations, if Board of Health applied, if Concom applied, et cetera. So, you know, I, it's understandable that a town works very hard, and goes to town meeting every year to update its zoning bylaw, and that's, the zoning bylaw is the map, the roadmap, for what we'd like the town, and what uses we want, and what places. And so, it's difficult, as a resident, to say someone can come in and disregard that. So, I mean, the comment's understandable, but I do know, the zoning administrator has confirmed that the waivers here are not excessive, in comparison to other 40Bs.
I assume that the 91 unit Avalon apartment complex went through a similar process when it was permitted?
No, well, actually, the, the existing Avalon project had gone through the whole master special permit process, and then, after the entire master permit was laid out, they came in just to do a lip for that one building, in order so that the town can have those units counted. So, it didn't, it wasn't its own micro 40B. It was actually all laid out, and then it was a lip after the fact. So, it wasn't quite the same process.
You describe a lip, because you've talked about that before.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, a lip is a local initiative, program.
What does that involve?
And that involves the developer, together with the Board of, coming to the Board of Selectmen with the project, and the Board of Selectmen joining in the application to the state agency, DHCD, to, to get approval for that project, and ultimately, to have the units counted on the inventory.
And has that been done in this town, other than the shipyard?
I, I believe it, it has been done before, but I couldn't tell you exactly how many times, or how many projects. I believe maybe the, the one up on Whiting Street.
Whiting Village?
Whiting Village, which predates my involvement on the Boards.
The parcel on Beale Street, I believe, next to the Selectmen's parcel. I believe those eight units were a lip.
Right. So, it may have been a lip application, and then gone through the 40B process with the zoning board. So, there's different ways you can do a lip. You can do a lip, and then it goes through a 40B review with the zoning board, or it can be done the way it was done in the shipyard, which is, you come in after the fact, and then the lip gets approved, so that the units can be added to our inventory. And those are local action units. So, there's, there's a lot of terms and a lot of acronyms, and there's a few different paths. And I think many of Hingham's affordable units have been achieved through all of the different paths available, under state law.
It's an ongoing effort, in other words.
Right. So, for example, the, for, Hingham Affordable Housing Trust bought a unit, I believe, at Beale Cove Condominium. It is going to be deed restricted. There will be an application to DHCD to have that one unit counted on our inventory as a local action unit. So, there has been many different ways that, that units have been created in Hingham.
So, these lips, the other ones we were talking about, much smaller scale, obviously?
No, not necessarily. Well, they have been in Hingham, but they-
That's what I'm talking about.
But they can be any size.
So, I know they can be, but the ones that we've referenced-
Yes.
On Beale Street, so they were much smaller than this proposal.
Right. The ones that have been done, kind of brought to the Selectmen, and the Selectmen have signed on, yes.
Yes, ma'am. I think I saw you last.
Hi, everybody. Janine Sucecki, 15 Park Sarko. I live at Crow Point, not in the neighborhoods you mentioned. A little bit about the 40B. Its own handbook states the following: "This handbook is a reflection of the agencies to commit ensuring that 40B affordable housing developments adhere to the standards of site and building design that enhance the quality of life for residents and the communities in which they reside." Chapter 40B has a long history of succession in Massachusetts. I'm going to skip a little bit that doesn't apply. This handbook strives to create a shared language and vision of well-designed housing, in order to create models of success for future developments to follow. Right there. If we don't, if they don't even have the right to apply for the 40B, because they're not meeting the criteria for 40B, that's something I think we need to consider as well. It says in the, in the specific handbook for 40B, that they're required to fit into the community, to blend. The people who are going to live in this community should blend in the community. The whole purpose of 40B is to encourage people that can't afford to live in a community otherwise, to be able to live in that community, such as police officers, firefighters, who have been pushed out of this town, because they work here, but they don't make the wages that it costs to live in the community. So, I would ask all the Selectmen to please come to the zoning board, read the handbook about 40B, and see if they even, Avalon has even met the criteria for the application yet. Are they, is their, is their proposal, or the one they're considering changing, which I also have a question about the parking. I didn't catch the spin.
Okay, but you can address your comments of the Board, if you will.
Right. It's not, I'm not asking him a question. What I said was, I didn't understand his spin very well, if you didn't hear me, about the parking garage underneath. So, I hope to see you guys on the 23rd. I'll certainly be there. And in the meantime, let's, let's see if they even can come up with something that fits 40B. It doesn't seem to meet the community at all, right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
The first step for any 40B project is that they need to apply for what's called a project eligibility letter, through a subsidizing housing agency of the state.
Has that happened?
That has happened, and the state has reviewed the original project, including all of those criteria that are set forth in the handbook. And the, the, I believe in this case, it's Mass Housing Partnership, is the state subsidizing agency, has issued a letter with comments, which is available from the zoning administrator, but which has issued a project eligibility letter stating that this project does meet the minimum criteria to be a 40B. So, the state subsidizing agencies get to make that determination, and, and they have made that determination for this, for this site.
Do those agencies reflect concerns conveyed to them as expressed by the Town of Hingham?
I, I believe so. I didn't come prepared to talk about the details of that application, because that's being done at the zoning board. But my understanding is that there is, is some feedback and comments from the subsidizing housing inventory within that letter, but I couldn't speak to the details of them.
Okay. I seem to recall reading some input from the ZBA on that, or at least the administrator. Is there anyone else who'd like to say something? I see two. Jim Watson, stand to be recognized.
Good evening. Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street.
How are you?
A general comment, I agree with the previous speaker. It's very important to be very thorough design review, and issues of scale, traffic, impact, you know, everything is important. But I think it's diversionary to spend a lot of time on the 10% issue, when, as I think you may have remembered, the Planning Board itself sued the ZBA over the non-affordability of Linden Ponds. DHCD, at the time, wrote that they wanted to void the initial comprehensive permit. After a lot of negotiation, they said they would accept 25%, so long as the subsidy held out. And recently, when some people were arguing that they had changed the rules in Midstream, they pointed out that, yes, they had, because initially, they didn't have regulations for a so-called continuing care community with a high deposit. And so, that when they changed their view on Linden Ponds, it was because they were just developing regulations that they had not had before. Anyway, there's many, many real issues, but I think we distract ourselves pursuing the 10%. And I just had a question, if I could ask, Susan. The provisions where you can have the same immunity, if you do a tenth of a percent per year, is that only if you have an approved production plan, which we don't have yet?
No. So, Jim's question is whether or not the 10% is the only way that you have the protection? Is that your question?
I mean, there's the area provision, and there's the 1% per year.
No. So, there's, they call them, refer to them as safe harbors, under the regulations, and there's a number of different ways to reach a safe harbor. The ultimate safe harbors is the 10%, or a certain land area, as you referred to. And then, there's some smaller safe harbors that are shorter in duration. So, there's a number of them, under the regulations.
And I guess what it is, is that you have to have a certified housing production plan for the last one to come in.
Right. So, if, if you have an approved housing production plan, which sets out a plan to meet certain goals over a period of time, and you are meeting those goals-
Right.
Then, you are able to, we call it the 10% letter, but you're able to send a letter, a similar letter, saying, "We have a safe harbor, because we have fulfilled these requirements." So, we call the 10% letter because, as a town, because as a town, the town, the residents feel, or the officials feel, that that is the criteria the town has met, but there are other criteria theoretically that could be met.
And finally, I'm just puzzled, that this doesn't come under the mixed use in the industrial district zoning. Is that strictly not in that district?
It's technically within the district. However, it's not part of the master permit.
Okay.
And so, because it's not in the, part of the master permit, and it's not large enough for its own mixed-use permit, it is only subject to the industrial zoning.
Thanks.
Okay.
We could get in a clarification on the history of what happened with Erickson, which is now known as Linden Ponds, but I'm going to defer that conversation. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is David Olafland. I'm a resident of the shipyard, I'm an owner resident. I think it's important-
Who lives, sir? By address?
I live at 125 Stainer Drive.
Thank you.
I think it's important for all of you to realize, as well as the gentleman from Avalon, that we want something developed there. We want Building 19, and everything attached to it to be removed, and we certainly want inclusion of 40B. Those of us in this room are not all privileged individuals. Lots of us have come to Hingham because of desire to be in this community. We've done that through our own achievement, and we're grateful to be part of this community. What we would like to see happen in this development is a respect for our ownership, our property. We don't want our property devalued by a behemoth property on 3A. We would like it to be consistent with the historical value of this town. Everywhere you go throughout this town, you see signs, signage, and reminders that Hingham is a 1600s community. And we'd like to keep that beauty and that consistency, and that's basically what we're here for. We welcome Avalon, if they want to come into some type of agreement with the construction that we think would be appropriate for the neighborhood, and we feel that we have a right to be part of that decision. And I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you for your very reasonable comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to? Yes, ma'am.
Laura Marwell, 30 Summit Drive in Bradley Park. I have a quick question. Has anyone done the math, how much this is going to move the needle on the- Has anyone done the math how much this is going to move the needle on the affordable housing? Does it get us closer? How much closer does it get us?
It's difficult to answer that question in candor, only because we don't know where the actual number that we're going to be contemplating is going to lean.
What we can do, though, is tell you where we are, right? We're 283 units away from the--
Uncontested.
Uncontested number.
Okay.
And that's, again, the town of Hangham feels it's over the 10% threshold. DHCD has consistently said, "No, you're not." Their view is we have 283 units to get over that threshold.
Okay. So I'd kind of like to give a shout out to the Affordable Housing Trust for their one unit, their kind of one-by-one, slow way to maintain some of the smaller affordable housing stock that we have in town without adding a whole bunch, because one of the problems is, you might be adding, you know, a handful of affordable units, but you're also adding a whole lot of market-rate units and creating burdens on the infrastructure of the town. So I would just like to say, I think we should encourage these small, these one-by-one purchases to try and get us there as well. And then I would like to say, I would like to ask, it seems to me this is sort of a political policy issue that's coming from on high, and who are the DHCD officials? How are they elected or appointed? And what kind of political pressure are you guys applying on our elected officials to try and change 40B, you know, up above, so that we can get the kind of affordable housing here that meets Hangham's needs, not that somebody up at the state feels we should have?
The, there is an undersecretary of the Department of Housing and Community Development that's appointed by the governor.
By the governor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Sure. I would probably add one other thing, that in my travels around the South Shore recently, this concern of 40B projects basically holding community hostages is widespread. And one of the possible scenarios, although I don't begin to tell you it's feasible in the short term, is to change the legislation. And so I think that's something that folks like me would be certainly looking at trying to do, but it's only one possible solution.
Yes, sir, in the back with the beard and the hat. He raised his hand first, sir.
Joshua Ross, 125 Wampatac Road in Crow Point. I just have a quick question. Who, you mentioned before, Susan, that if there's a plan in place, the safe harbor provision, who makes the decision on relinquishing the 100% down to the 25% so that we can apply for, or put a plan together to enact these safe harbors, so projects like this don't pop up and, as someone mentioned before, hold us hostage?
I have not read in detail, in preparation for this meeting, the process for doing a plan at this point. I do know that when it was done a number of years ago, it was, the town planner had a big role in helping to put together all the data and the information, but it was submitted by the Board of Selectmen to DHCD at that time, because the letter that came back with the comments was addressed to the chairwoman of the Board of Selectmen at the time. So I believe if you're going to come up with this type of plan, it's a community process with input and that, you know, all the boards would weigh in. But, you know, at this time, there is a position that's held by the town, and I would say that, you know, if that position's going to change--
If I could add a little bit to it to clarify, having worked with some of the staff on this, is that I guess the way I would boil it down is, they won't accept a housing production plan because we don't agree with them that we're over the, under the 10%. So we can keep sending them up there, and they're going to keep saying, "No, you're not. It's not a valid plan, because you're not recognizing our rules." So we're caught. We cannot do that. However, there is a safe harbor that we have talked about, and I know I've heard it, and I've seen some of the discussions about it already. If you produce housing units over a certain amount on a project, you get a safe harbor. I believe it's a year safe harbor. So.
Just to clarify, Susan, if we were to, if DHCD had said to, if we had come back to DHCD and said, "Okay, we agree with your number, only 25% of the Linden Ponds," that basically means that we've lost our right to appeal. So we wouldn't be able to make the decision that some of you are asking us to make tonight if we capitulated to that 25%. So it's, there's a little bit of a gotcha there.
Right, and I understand that, and I think based upon some of the information that was revealed to us tonight about another 300-unit building right down the street, it sounds like developers are putting a plan in place without us. So if there is future projects, and I'm sure you know of more, that we don't know of yet, it sounds like there is a plan. So if something can be put in place, we can file some safe harbor showing the town, or the state that, hey, there's going to be a smaller building at the shipyard, a smaller building at where Beals, next to the selectmen's parcel, a smaller unit, you know, on Pleasant Street or somewhere, wherever you mentioned. It sounds like we could show some sort of plan that makes progress towards the overall number without whacking it all off at once and put something that no one wants, whereas spraying it out all over town and kind of getting it that way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, gentleman in the blue sweater.
My name is Bob Harman. I live at 123 HMS Stainer Drive, shipyard.
Welcome.
I think what, part of the concern of most of the folks are not adverse to the 40B, but using tonight's numbers of 190, that would be 19 affordable units. Am I correct?
It's 25%.
It's 25%.
Right.
I'm sorry. There's 25% of the units built are required to be offered at affordable rates. 75 are market rate, 75% are market rate of whatever the total of any 40B development is proposed. But all of the units of a rental development that are proposed count towards the index, not just the 25%. 100% count.
But if the rental market collapsed, like in '08 or whatever, and they wound up with many, many empty units, can they increase the 40B? No.
They got no way to go. They've built out the site.
In other words, those units would have to stay empty.
Well, I think that would be their economic issue. In terms of the units counting, any 40B project that's approved as a rental project like this or the 91 units before, all those 91 units count on our index, even though only 25% of them are affordable.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we understand, because I hear a lot of confusion on that often, that we're only going to get 25% of these units towards our index. No, you get 100% of the units towards your index on any affordable project.
Okay.
Rental.
Part of the word going around, as you know, things get a little crazy. People are talking about, they're going to create a project here, see.
Well, that's why we're doing this tonight, just to kind of educate, clarify. Ultimately, though, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Selectmen isn't going to decide this. It's the ZBA. The Board of Selectmen appoints members to the ZBA, and I like to think that we've done a pretty good job of who we've appointed to that board over the years, because it takes on some very difficult issues, very controversial ones such as this, and, you know, it's committed to a rule of law. It knows the standards of review, and its decisions are capable of being tested in a court of law. So, you know, speaking for myself, I have never called a member of the ZBA when they are deciding anything. I leave that to them because that is their role. That is the process, and I'm respecting that. But I felt it was very important that we have this gathering tonight, so that if there were additional questions, if there were, if there was confusion, because I sensed some of that in the letters that we received, it would be helpful to have this conversation as a community.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd just also like to just mention for the record that you shouldn't call them, because the rules and regulations of the zoning board forbids them from ex parte communications with anyone during the pending hearing. So I would not recommend that anyone call, that either public or any town official call a zoning board member directly while they have a pending application, because they have rules and regulations to make sure that that does not occur and that they all follow a certain code of conduct.
And it could adversely affect the town's ability to deal with this development.
Or any development. And it also means that one member of the board is getting information that the other members aren't, so there's a lot of good reasons why they have that rule in place.
So Susan, our opportunity as selectmen to weigh in is right, is tonight, right? In other words, we're taking, potentially taking a vote on authorizing the legal funds over a certain amount, and we can also put our two cents in as to what we think in terms of the 10% letter, et cetera.
Right, so I would say if you want to speak as a board, and you're not meeting before they make a decision on the 10% issue, then tonight's, if you wish to attend a meeting and express your views, you can do that as well. But I'm saying as a board--
As a private citizen?
Any, every, any resident can appear at any hearing or any meeting and discuss what they wish to discuss. I'd say if you want to do something as a board, then obviously the board needs to have met.
Right, and I would just say this, that I do intend on being at that meeting on the 23rd. I've been asked to be there by folks here, and I'm going to be there again. But I would just like to briefly maybe just make a comment if we're winding it down, Mr. Chairman.
You are welcome to talk, Mr. Gianna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
So I want to thank everybody for coming. First of all, I want to thank everybody for the emails and the conversation and the concerns, because I view that as my, what I'm supposed to do. My job is to protect to the extent I can, to represent you as an elected official, and look out for this town and the future, and when it becomes, especially when it comes to development. I don't know Avalon, I don't know Michael Roberts. I always assume people that want to do business in this town have the good intentions and they're good neighbors. I will tell you that when I heard of this 250-unit development with all the issues that have been raised, I wondered. I wondered why. Why would you do something like this in that area? And again, I don't have the benefit of working with your group in the past, and so I don't want to judge you, obviously, but in terms of personally, I think we're at a point in time now, where, here's the problem, we have a 15-day period. This is our last meeting before the ZBA meets. You've made some type of discussion. I really wasn't aware of the meeting on Monday, so I walked in on it unknowingly, but that's another story for another day. But I didn't, I don't know what your proposals are, so just being cautious and being protective of my community, I really can't base any decisions on what you might do, although I appreciate that you're listening to us to a certain extent. But I certainly would be supportive and would anticipate making a motion to authorize the ZBA to use the additional legal funds. And just so it's clear, because I'm not 100% clear as to what my role is, whether I should make a motion or not, I'm not sure it's necessary. I just want everybody here to know, and people at home to know, that I support sending the 10% letter, because as I sit here today, I don't have an alternative proposal to weigh it against. And if I don't voice that opinion tonight, it may be lost, because I don't know if we're going to meet before then. I will be here on the 23rd, but to the extent that Avalon wants to discuss things with the town and the board and our town administrator, I know the door is always open, because we're always willing to talk. But I just want to be crystal clear for everybody tonight where I stand.
Chair recognizes Ms. Burns.
Laura Burns, 96, Hershey Street. I just wanted to take a moment to share some of my perspective from my history as being one of the people who has worked over the last decade to promote and to plan affordable housing in this community, as difficult as that is. I was involved in the creation of the housing, the Affordable Housing Trust when I was on the advisory committee. When I served on the Board of Selectmen, my six years, I served as the selectman member of the Affordable Housing Trust. And my goals were always two. The first goal was, of course, build affordable housing, because like the lady who spoke earlier, I feel that a diverse housing stock makes our community stronger. And also, the 40B law, which is an incredibly blunt instrument and has many aspects of it that we don't care for at all, there's a lot of it that needs changing, and many, many legislatures have tried to change it over the past decades, that someday perhaps changes will be made. I don't know, so far it hasn't been very successful, but the goal of the law, if you go up one level, is to just make the case that every community in the Commonwealth has a responsibility for their, for our share of providing affordable housing, because the lack of affordable housing, number one, is an incredible drag on our economy. When businesses can't move here because they, housing is too expensive, that's all kinds of jobs that don't move here, not just jobs for less, lower incomes, but higher-income jobs too, when businesses don't locate here. So that's, we all as a Commonwealth share this responsibility. So I wanted to build affordable housing, but my number-two goal, right up there on the same level, was get to 10%, because I wanted our town to be able to control this process. The dream is we should be able to plan affordable housing, but let's be clear, until we are, we have agreed with DHCD that we're at 10%, we don't get to plan it. It drops out of the sky in very large chunks. And so I guess what I would like to say is that I have, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we saw many really unappealing 40B projects come through. I opposed the Avalon project that was proposed on Recreation Park Drive, and I was proud to be part of the project of coming to an agreement with Avalon to purchase that land. And there are other 40B projects that I opposed. I would like to say that that project in particular I opposed because it was the wrong project in the wrong place. This project that we are looking at tonight, in my humble opinion, is the right project in the right place. If Avalon is willing to listen to the neighbors, to address the concerns about massing, about size, and I hear they are already having this, engaging productively in this discussion, what the state wants us to do, and what we should want to do, is create transit-oriented development. This has been what the state has been asking us for, for years. Put your densest housing next to the ferry, on the bus line, near the train station. That's where it should go, not on Recreation Park Drive or other more historical areas where it's going to be next to a house that was built in 1730. So that is, in my opinion, the right location for a project of this size. Would I wish that I had more control over the size of it? Yes, I would, and I hope we can get to 10%, so we would have much more control over it than we will have over this project. But it's going to be 190 units, if that's what it is, towards our 283 that we are lacking, and that is huge. And make no mistake, there will be more projects coming down the road. We heard about one tonight. When I was on the board, if this project doesn't go through, we're going to get something like the one that was proposed when I was on the board, which was a five-story building on Ward Street. That is, fortunately, that one, the developer didn't have the money to appeal, so that one went away, but we had sent our 10% letter, because we definitely didn't want to see that. So I very much hope that Avalon will listen to the neighbors, take their concerns in, and make a building that fits with what is already there. For example, why doesn't it look just like the other Avalon building that's there? I don't know, but that seemed logical to me, that it should look more like that. But I think that if we can get further towards 10%, then the Affordable Housing Trust will be able to continue its projects of buying individual units, taking one market rate off the market, putting one affordable on. The problem with that is we will never get to 10% that way, because every unit costs about $50,000. You buy at market rate, you resell cheaper. How much money can the town put into that? We can't afford to get there with our preferred method. But when we get to 10%, we will be able to continue increasing our market-rate stock, preserving the small houses, always taking a market-rate unit off the market when we put a, when we put an affordable one on. That's a much better plan for Hangham, so I would like to see us get to 10%, so we can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Susan Sullivan, I live at 133 HMS Whittaker in Hewitt's Landing. And just in response to the comments of, you know, this project being the right project, we are not looking at a project that has 190 units yet, or the look and feel yet.
Could you address your comments to the board, please?
Yes. We aren't looking at a project that has 190 units yet, or a look and feel like that yet. We have a decision to make in a very short time that's on the plan that is filed, and we have, hopefully, in our letters on behalf that we've sent-- we have, hopefully, in our letters on behalf that we've sent, as a community, outlined our immediate concerns. And if a window is going to close, and we're not going to be able to file the letter, we're not going to be able to access those legal fees in time to fight the proposal that's on the table, I have grave concerns that we hope it will be better, but that's not really representing the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. I think it's time for us to just chat amongst ourselves at this point.
Did you have anything else to add, Paul?
I'll wait for you, Mary.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank everybody for attending the meetings, for writing the letters, for sending them along. Read every single letter. We got, we got one version of a letter many times, but each time we got it, we put it in a file, because while the letter may have been the same, it was another voice in the community. And it's important to hear everybody's, it's important to hear everybody's voice. I'd like to just make a couple of comments. The first thing I'd like to say, and there've been some references to us being or not being at the ZBA meeting, and just for the record, last Monday, when we became aware that the ZBA was meeting, the same night the selectmen were meeting, and knowing that we had an agenda that was probably going to go pretty late, I actually was the one who made the request of the ZBA to consider televising the meeting. And I did that for two reasons. The first one was because I wanted to be able to watch the hearing after it concluded. I understood that there were going to be a lot of people there, and I thought it was important to listen to everybody. And the second reason is because I think it was going to give this project even greater community exposure, and that was important too. We've not only heard from some of you who live in very close proximity to this project, but we've heard from others throughout the community, and we've heard different things, but I think it was important to do. We actually had the very good fortune the other night, and I guess it's probably hard for you to believe right now, but last week, our meeting actually finished up earlier than we expected. We were confronted with a situation where if more than one selectman had gone to that room without it being posted, we would have been in violation of the open meeting law. And as complex as this whole thing is, lop an open meeting law complaint on top of it, and it just gets more complex. So I can't speak for selectman Healy, but I was, I felt good knowing that the hearing was televised. We spoke to H-CAM to make sure it would be posted by the weekend, and I can assure you that I watched every minute of it, I saw every bit of it. You know, if this board wants to decide to potentially attend the meeting next week, we just would need to post that meeting, but I want everybody to understand that we take this matter very seriously, and we've really been, we've been attentive to what everybody has said. The other point that I would make is that with respect to the question of affordable housing, and I think folks have kind of expressed different opinions about what the town is doing, I would also draw your attention to an opportunity that we all have at this year's town meeting, and that is a warrant article for the selectman's parcel. The selectman's parcel is on Beale Street, and that's a parcel of land that the town purchased, that we gave to the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of developing affordable housing. Earlier this year, the town asked, the selectmen asked the Affordable Housing Trust if we could actually use that land to potentially construct an assisted-living facility of between, is it 60 to 100?
In that range.
60 to 100. These would all be rental units, they would all count towards our subsidized housing inventory, but more importantly for us, and, you know, we're not, we're not just all about the numbers here, but more importantly, it seemed to us to represent a need in the community, a housing need in the community that wasn't filled at this time. And in order, in order for us to move that along, we actually need town meeting's permission to let us dispose of the land. We can't sell it to a developer without town meeting approving. So Susan mentioned earlier that there've been a couple zoning initiatives to try to help us with affordable housing that haven't passed at town meeting. We've got another opportunity to do that on April 24th, so we hope, as you get your warrant, you will, you will take a look and consider that. You know, with respect to the question that this board has, and clearly, the question is, would we authorize the funding if the ZBA, you know, was opting to go that route? I'm inclined to support that request tonight. I would also say that I'm, based on what I've heard tonight, I'm not really in a place to say, "ZBA, issue the letter, ZBA, don't issue the letter." I really think that's their job to do, and I think that there's been so much new information. I think we've heard that, you know, we recognize that Avalon has been listening, we appreciate that, but I think there's a genuine interest in seeing how some of these, what these concepts might look like. And so I think it would be premature to do anything more than to say, you know, it's been this board's practice that when the ZBA has asked for the funding, we've made it available, but I trust the ZBA. I would also say that, based on what I saw tonight, this seems to be moving in the right direction. I think I'd be interested in seeing what, what happens next week. I realize it is a short window, I think we all feel that. I also feel like we've made a lot of progress in the last week, so I'm hopeful the next week will bring the same level of progress.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything beyond what you've already said? Who here enjoys living at the shipyard? Want all the hands up? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. The permitting of the shipyard was a labor of love. I thoroughly enjoyed the experience when I did it. I enjoyed the people I worked with. I had a great time, and it's such a pleasure to see it populated by people who fervently care about what it looks like and what it will continue to look like. I have a high degree of respect and confidence in the ZBA, in the Zoning Board of Appeals. I've read the submittals by Avalon. I've read the traffic engineering report. I've read the planning board memo. I choose not to comment. That is not my role. It would be inappropriate and unfair to my colleagues sitting on the ZBA to put my thumb on this scale. I have expressed my concerns to the applicant, as I lovingly refer to Avalon. Avalon, by all accounts, tonight, has heard those concerns and is responding. Ms. Power is indeed correct, however, we're in a very short window. I do not advocate one way or the other, what the ZBA should do with respect to the 10 percent issue. I have confidence that they have the ability to make the right decision. I support the decision that they make. If it's to file, I support it. If they need the legal resources to do that, they will have it. That is the bottom line for me. However, if they opt not to file it because they feel that this is a project that can work, I have confidence that they can do that. And I think that you need to have patience. I think you need to engage with the developer, so that your voices are heard in a constructive way, so that this project, when its, when its ultimate iteration is proposed for the ZBA's consideration, reflects and incorporates the concerns that you have raised in these letters. Some of those concerns, I think, are extremely valid. Some of them, I'm not sure that it's within the capabilities of the developer to address. But again, I'm not going to speak to it, because that's not my role. But to the extent that this, this community needs the assurance from this board that we stand behind the ZBA, I'm prepared to say that we do. If the comfort level of my colleague requires a formal vote for that, we can do that as well, however, I also think that that is something that would be a departure from the traditional practice of this board, but under the circumstances, I'm prepared to accede to that. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Just quick comment. None of us, at least me in particular, are really familiar going into this as to what we were supposed to do. So when I made inquiries on Tuesday with counsel, there were two things that we were, we could do. We could vote to extend the money, and we could vote to state our recommendation. And when I asked, and this is why I made my comment tonight, is I understood the ZBA to be receptive to what we thought. And so I didn't want to make there to be any question of where I stood, because I don't want it to be read differently by anybody. If I was told, and I take that to the bank, so to speak, that they want to know what we think, here we are live, and I gave that impression. My colleague may not want to do that. I don't know if we need a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think we do.
And I don't know if we do, but I certainly want to vote to expend the money, but the bottom line is, is that I've made my position clear, based on the fact that it's my understanding that they want to hear from us, and that's, that's why I spoke up.
The message that I give to my colleagues on the ZBA is that I have confidence in their ability to process this application fairly and in the best interests of the town. And to the extent they need the resources to do that, they'll have it. I don't know how much clearer I can be. I'm on tape, I'm being recorded.
We've got witnesses.
I got witnesses. My lawyer's over there.
The town's lawyer's over here.
You need a lawyer?
All right. Do we, do we? Okay. You know, I'd like to stick with the commitment that we've had in the past. I see no reason to depart from it. You've heard our position. You know, do you want me to slice open my hand and, you know, put it on the gr-? I don't know. Yeah, you do. I think at this point, we've made our position clear. I think we can go forward from there. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you all very much.
Want to do a motion?
No, not at all.
Do we have one more? We have a couple more pieces of business.
Paul, and the motion for the money, not for the other. We have to do this.
Just going to support them, whatever they need, they'll get.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on that point, I just want, before you, before everybody goes, it was my understanding, we have a vote on our agenda tonight, to authorize legal counsel as requested by the Board of Appeals, and I understand, we're not going to vote on that tonight. I thought that was a given, I thought we were voting on that. So I'm going to make a motion to do that, because I thought that was, we were in agreement that that was going to be done. So I'm going to make a motion to authorize legal counsel as requested by the Board of Appeals, and that's, that's-
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just, I'm just, point of order, because I'm a little bit confused. I think what, what I just heard is that this board has never formally voted, but you just heard three selectmen saying, "If the ZBA wants the money, they can have the money." So-
That's not true, though. I think we were told that we need to vote it to authorize that.
I guess I'll look to our town administrator and counsel. I'm confused.
The board has a policy of not allowing me to authorize legal counsel past 5,000. I've authorized legal counsel to work with the ZBA. I'm past my authority at 5,000. We've never actually taken votes for these type of ZBA hearings. It's usually for lawsuits, but if you'd like to, perfectly fine. I don't see any-
Well, I don't want any question. I think we vote to it, and if it's, if it's a decision they make, they'll move with it. If they don't, they won't need it, right? What's the harm?
Sit outside.
I have a, I have a motion out there.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have a couple of other items, quickly.
Folks, we have a couple more things to finish up if, if you're heading out.
We should have done that anyway. That was a given, that was easy. We don't have to do anything, you're not going to make that decision.
I don't want your problems.
You're welcome.
Okay, the other item I have for you is to sign an amendment.
Cut the MOU, too.
Guys, can you take that outside, please? Because we're still in session.
Let's keep moving.
To sign an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Bearcove Properties LLC-
Ladies and gentlemen, could I please ask you to take the conversation out into the hall, so we could finish up with other business? Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
To sign an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Bearcove Properties LLC and the Town of Hingham. You have, you had previously signed a memorandum of understanding between Bearcove Properties LLC and the Town. Counsel pointed out to us that there were a couple of items that needed to be changed, and we were able to get Bearcove Properties to agree to the amendment, and so it's for you here to sign. You have counsel here if you want any more detail on that, but it dealt with certain rights and provisions of us moving forward.
Just briefly, maybe just-
Sure. So in connection with this Wood New York project, there's a need to lay on the bridge and build a deck that will allow accessible, handicap accessible access off of the bridge, and that was going to take up a good portion of the property at Three Oda Street. The owner of Three Oda Street was using some of the area behind his building for storage and was concerned about losing that. Town meeting authorized two, two fun, two fun, sources of funds, I apologize for my wording here. One was a payment of $10,000 to obtain a permanent easement, to allow for the bridge landing and this deck area, and the second one was up to $10,000 in connection with a storage float to address the lost storage on the property, and the town was going to work with, cooperate with the owners to get a Chapter 91 license. The release of the easement was tied to the granting of the Chapter 91 license, however, the owner of the property has not moved that Chapter 91 process along at the same pace that the town is moving, and so we needed an amendment that would allow us to record the easement before the Chapter 91 license was issued. He has agreed to that, so therefore, this modification allows the town to release the easement from record, record it, at which point, when we record it, the first payment of $10,000 will be owed to the owner of the property. That was as authorized by town meeting. So this just makes sure that we have the legal easement in place before we start building on his property as a town. Does that make sense?
It gives me a little extra information, that's what I need.
Okay.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to sign the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Bearcove Properties LLC and the Town of Hingham. Does that make sense?
It gives me a little extra information, that's what I need.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to sign the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Bearcove Properties LLC and the Town of Hingham.
A second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
I just have one thing. Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
I just want to let folks know, again, since it is tomorrow night, March 18th, that the SNAP, Special Needs Athletic Partnership, St. Patrick's Day Benefit is going to be held from 7:00 to 11:00 at the Community Center, where there'll be Irish music, Irish dance, and all the proceeds go to benefit the sports programs for special needs kids. It's a win-win, and if you're around and you want to celebrate your Irish heritage, even if you're not, you can be one for the day, and come join us. Thank you.
Any one ahead?
I just noticed that in our correspondence, that our town administrator was appointed to the Strategic Opportunity Council of the ESGR, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that and congratulate him, and thank you for being willing to do that.
Thank you very much. It was quite an honor to hear from those folks. I'm pleased to announce that the Town of Hingham, as it was notified through Mr. Lexiades, was recently selected as one of America's outstanding Navy Reserve employers for the year 2016, as a result of a nomination for this distinct honor by Chief Keith German. Very happy to hear that. I think it's, it's a real pleasure to appoint Ms. DeVino as a Hingham police officer on the same night that we announced that- the same night that we announced that honor. And finally, I want to, I want to congratulate Jacob Brody for his appointment to the U.S. Air Force Academy through Steve Lynch's office. That's a great accomplishment, and his parents, Margot and Mark Brody, are to be commended. That is outstanding. Hingham Public School, go Air Force. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, before we do so, Mr. Redden has a question. It's late, so hopefully it'll be brief.
And I appreciate your hearing me. I came, I asked to, having seen the agenda and appointments being one of the items on the agenda, I had an interest in a potential appointment that I think has been before the Selectmen, I didn't know it had been acted on. I came and entered into the Avalon process. My information was, if you were to do the appointment portion, it would probably be later in the meeting, so I wasn't here earlier. I don't know whether you had a conversation about appointments.
Not at this time. We're not prepared.
Neither, neither has the board been updated about your issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Susan.